Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is a regular meeting of the Hood County Commissioners' Court. It is February the 9th. It's 9:00 a.m. in the central jury room of the Hood County Justice Center here at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. Today, once again, Dr. Bill Miller with the Hood County Pastor Council has brought a distinguished member of our community to do the invocation, who's been here before. He has a church here in Hood County that we all know about and is really on the rise. It's Pastor Paul Duncan with Mambrino Baptist Church. Pastor?
Let's pray. Our Father who is in heaven, we pray that your name would be great, that your kindness and your mercy that is shown to us in Christ Jesus would be clear to us, would be known to us, would be welcomed by us, that we would be faithful. And I pray particularly for the commissioners this morning that there would be unity among these men with the work that must be done, with decisions that must be made, with opinions that must be heard, and all that will be done. God, we pray that there would be unity, that these men would be humble, God, that they would be able to listen, and that they would be careful to listen, they would be slow to speak and quick to listen and slow to be angry. We pray that among us all today, there would be a clear sense of justice, that we would be careful with one another, that we would be wise, and that we would be faithful. Our desire is to serve all of our citizens. God, I know these men desire that. I know everyone in this room desires the good of our brothers and sisters in this town and in this county. So I pray that there would be no favoritism shown among the people that are here today, that we would be those that consider the weak, the elderly and the poor that are among us and their needs, so that Hood County can be a place where every citizen is helped, every citizen is made better. So we pray, God, for health, for wisdom, as we deal with COVID and responses, and what is wise and good and safe and right for all. God, give us this insight. And God, I pray for work opportunities. I pray for all of our citizens, God, for our businesses to grow and to flourish, for citizens to want to work and to have opportunity to work. As we bring these items to one another and to the commissioners, God, we pray that there would be a care and a carefulness, a love, a unity, and a respect among us all. And God, we pray forward in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Now, would you please join me in pledging allegiance to this great nation? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The only pledge of Texas was pledged.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of Texas. One state under God, one and indivisible.
The next item we have is special presentations, and that is the presentation of the Hart Inner Civics Hybrid Verity Voting System. And then after that, we're going to have the presentation of Election System and Software's ESS, ES and S Hybrid Express Voting System. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I'm going to be brief. I don't want to take up too much of y'all's time. I think that I saw most of y'all at our demos two weeks ago. I just want to kind of give you a... My name's John. I'm with Hart. And I want to give you a quick background on Hart, the equipment that you're looking to purchase, and also I'm going to let you know a little secret about both companies. At the end of the day, we both accurately record a vote. No one else is going to say that, you know, but I'm going to say it out loud. We do it in different ways. I think my way's better. Mr. Moody might think his way's better. But we do do it in different ways, and I just want to go over that real quick. So Hart has been in business since 1912. One of the major differences between us and our competitors is that we're a Texas-based company. We've been in Texas since 1912. We started out printing paper ballots and delivering those paper ballots to counties. In the early 2000s, late 90s, early 2000s, we got into the actual voting system business. Once we started doing that, we were selling voting systems to Texas counties and expanded across the nation. As of today, we're in about 20 different states, including the state of Texas, our neighbors up north in Oklahoma. We do their entire elections in that state. And the system that you're looking at today, we have many different versions of it, from electronic to hand-marked paper to the version that you looked at yesterday. We're in about 86 different counties with that system, depending on the version. And then we're in your neighboring counties, Parker and Tarrant, with the version that you looked at a couple of weeks ago. The next thing I want to talk about is ballots. You know, there's a lot of things out there about, you know, barcodes in ballots, no barcodes in ballots. There's a lot of misinformation. We have a patent on how we use our scanner. You can look that up, what that patent is. The reason we were awarded that patent is because how we read the ballot and how we don't read it using barcodes. I suggest everybody look that up. I mean, I have the patent number right here, U.S. Patent 10445966. And they awarded us that patent because how we read those words on the paper and don't read the barcode that correlates to that election. Now, I'm not saying how ESNS does it is any worse, but I'm saying how we do it prevents human error in programming and allows that to be caught. That's really all I had to say today. You know, I think everybody saw the equipment. Everybody saw how it worked. You know, I just want to make the couple of points of, you know, we're Texas-based. We manufacture in Texas. We manufacture in the United States. And you're taking my word for it, but I worked for this company for six and a half years, and I really believe in the equipment that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have ESNS. Good morning, Mr. Moody.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. How's everybody doing this morning? I'd like to start out, I think everybody got to see the equipment last week when we're out here, so I'm going to speak a little bit more about the company this morning. I'm going to leave you guys with three bullet points here. I want to talk about the company, our products, and our people at a high level. If you have any questions, feel free to cut me off, or I can stay up here a little longer afterwards. First thing I want to talk about is our company. We've been building hardware counting votes for 40 years. Our company is a very strong company when it comes to building tabulation equipment. We've got a lot of experience in that field. We've been under a single ownership for 40, or that entire 40 years. It's both owned by the McCarthy Group out of Omaha, Nebraska, and then 15% of the company is employee-owned. We're also the first election company to reach out to the market and hire a chief security information officer, who allows us to partnership with the FBI, Homeland Security. We've got Albert sensors plugged into our corporate network to make sure no one's trying to infiltrate our network system. And today, I'm not sure about the other vendors, but as far as I know, we're the first company to actually employ one of those security officers at the high level. Our products, we like to call them built by our customer. About five years ago, after the original Hava equipment started seeing its life expectancy come up over the horizon, we knew we needed to build a new product. This time, instead of building something that we thought the market was going to need, we decided to hold seminars across the nation, and specifically here in Texas, we did six seminars throughout the state, where we brought county clerks in, election administrators, and even poll workers in some counties in, and basically asked them, what do you see the next or the future of voting looking like? What does it look like from a hardware standpoint? What does the flow look like when you check in as a voter? How does the system need to work? What do you think your voters are going to be confident in using when they come out to vote, or when you buy your next voting system? So that's when we came up with our hybrid voting solution. Overwhelmingly, no one wanted an electronic system anymore. Most people didn't want hand-marked paper ballots anymore, but they wanted somewhere in between, so that's where we came up with the hybrid solution. It's a solution that can also utilize hand-marked ballots as well, so you really get the best of both paper worlds there. Our people, we think the most important part about selling a voting system is the ongoing service and support that we provide the counties. We do a really well job in this. If you guys, if we're lucky to have this award today go in our favor, this will be the 101st county in Texas that will have bought this voting system. Our implementation managers are former elections administrators. When we were hiring talent to help us with all the implementations that have been happening over the last three years, we reached out to former election administrators. We thought they would be the best candidates for that position. Not only can they show a county how to use the voting system, help them with the implementation, but they also bridge that gap between the technology and election laws. So they're there to actually consult with the administrators on how that technology interfaces with election laws. Finally, I want to thank you all for the 20-plus years of business you guys have given us. This has been a very good customer of ours, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Okay. I want to open it up to questions. Does anybody... Did anybody want to speak on voting machines here? If they do, I'll... This should be under five. Roman numeral five. These are all under five?
No, it's everything. I give you a list.
Okay. Well, this is everything. So this is... Is there anybody under five? No. Okay. 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 This is all of them so far, then?
Yes.
Okay. Good. I'll keep this... Thank you. Okay. Ms. Michelle Carew says you are elections administrator. I'd like for you to come up and tell us, there's two things. There was, we had two, we had workshops here, one in the morning, one in the afternoon with both of these vendors. Both of them approved by the state, correct?
Yes, sir.
And we had the citizens actually grade the two vendors. Is that right? From...
That's correct, yes. We had a survey that was available at the end of the day.
Okay. Do you have that survey with you here today?
I didn't. It was my understanding I was number 10 and 11, so I didn't bring it for the presentations. I have it on my desk. I was planning to come back when we came back to number 10 and 11 on the agenda.
Okay. On the agenda, then. Okay. Well, can you enlighten us with what are the pluses and minuses with both of these systems here, and what you think would work better for this county?
Honestly, Judge, after reviewing all the surveys, I mean, I gave you guys copies of it. I don't really want to be the deciding factor when it comes to the voting equipment. I really want to leave it on to the court for the court to make that decision. It's not about what's best for me or for the people that work in my office. It's what's best for the county. So I'd really like to leave it up to you guys to make that decision. I don't want to give any type lean one way or another. I think they're both great companies. Whichever way the county goes, I know that, I'm confident my office can execute it and make it 100%.
And you have worked with both companies, haven't you?
I have.
And you found both of them responsive to the needs of the county?
Absolutely.
And the cost factor for both of them, the cost factor was really surprising to me. It's about approximately $4,000 difference between both systems. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So the cost is really not a factor then either?
That's right.
Okay. So, you know, I know one of the things that we discussed is that this is an off-election year, so that this year, there are the city council elections that they have asked Hood County to do, that you're going to be in charge of in May. Is that correct?
Right. Our May election is our general election that's held every May in Texas. It covers city schools and other municipalities. For this upcoming May election, we're looking at, I just received a phone call yesterday about a bond election, so we'll have a bond election, and AMUD will be on the ballot, and we're currently waiting for that period to expire to see if anyone else is having an election. They have until this Friday for anyone who wants to run for the municipality elections. Their deadline to be on, to register, to have their name placed on the ballot is Friday at 5:00. So we haven't even met that.
City councils, school board members?
Cities, schools, and other municipalities, yes, sir.
So you do have some systems on the thing. You know, one of the things that you and I were discussing is that the idea of buying this equipment so that we could have it for this type of election, which is a smaller election, and then the election in November that's coming up, which deals with constitutional amendments.
That's right.
Is there anything else on the November 2021 election besides constitutional amendments?
Not that I'm aware of.
So from looking at it from our perspective, we're getting new voting equipment. I was looking at it, maybe it's better to go ahead and try to get the equipment now and have both elections to see how the equipment went. So if there's any bugs, we have the opportunity to work it out, rather which system we would go through. And I know that Commissioner Eagle, we both looked at the deal about the voting equipment, and we both want to get voting equipment, because I think the voting equipment that we do have needs to be replaced. Is that your feeling about the voting equipment? Does it need to be replaced?
Yes, sir. The voting equipment that we have is over 15 years old. It falls apart. It weighs a ton. It's super heavy for our judges and clerks whenever they have to set up their poll sites. During this last election, as I explained during the workshops when I was asked, we had some electrical issues because there was, they're just old. And so we had some that had some exposed wires. We had some that went down. I mean, it didn't, we were still able to go back and tally the votes that were on those machines, but they are just breaking down. A lot of the parts are no longer manufactured, so when it's time to do some replacement parts, when we contact our vendor and let them know we need certain parts, some are not even being manufactured, and they have to basically take it off another piece of equipment that they have, you know, in their warehouse. So nothing that we have with that equipment is brand-new. It's all, it's not even refurbished. It's basically just borrowed from another piece of equipment.
Yeah. There were comments about the machines actually literally sparking.
That's right. During early voting and on Election Day.
Okay. And that's not a good sign.
No, it never is.
Okay. So the one thing that when Dave Commissioner Eagle brought it up, I look at his suggestions, it was a great suggestion, is that also why not wait until this 2021 legislature is finished to see if they're going to have any new requirements or whatever? And I reached out and talked to Mr. Moody, and I don't know, I figured if one would do it, the other would do it too. I was kind of running out of time. And that, Mr. Moody for ESNS put a clause in his contract that in the event the state legislature added some requirement, that the machine right now did not meet that requirement, that they would either fix it, and if they couldn't, would take back the machines and refund our money. And of course, that's real good. I'm assuming that the same offer or willingness would be from Hart. Am I correct? Do you want to step up and just answer that question?
Hey, Judge?
Yes, sir.
I don't want anybody to get mad at me. Please. But this item, we're talking, you've jumped over to, isn't this, aren't we going to talk about this under miscellaneous item 11? This is, this is not a discussion, to present the two companies is not a discussion item, sir. Can we, can we wait?
Well, yeah, we can wait. I'd just like him to answer that one question, because we have a time between now and then. If we could just answer that one other question about, would y'all be willing to put a clause in your contract that if there were certain voting requirements passed by the 2021 legislature, would your company be willing to add an addendum to this?
So that, I, we got that question, I think it was last Thursday, and that didn't give us enough time to really dig into the contract, to figure out what we can and can't do. When you're looking at stuff like that, that's above my head. That's at the lawyer head. And there are a lot of auditing rules on adding stuff and outside auditors that look at that kind of stuff. If the county chooses to select Hart, we can have that negotiation of what we can and can't do. But I will say that there has been no bill so far filed that would decertify our equipment or ESNS's equipment. And talking with our Director of Government Affairs, there doesn't look like there's going to be a bill out there. And if there is, most likely it would die in committee, because there are too many counties that have spent millions. Harris County just spent $54 million. You know, Tarrant County spent $16 million. That's spent way too much money for them to go and say, this is now decertified. Sorry for your loss.
Okay.
I think they would have a, you know, the counties would have a, some, you know, the state would have something crazy on their hands if they did that to the counties.
Okay. Good deal. You kind of agree with that statement, Ms. Moody? Okay. Good deal. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and proceed then with the service awards then. Thank you very much, and we'll come back at the appropriate time. Okay. This is a time where we already have a stack of public participation forms here, but if anybody in the audience wishes to make a comment about anything on the agenda, the Sheriff Deeds has a public participation form. If you can fill that out and then hand it to Ms. Lang, she will number you and put you in line, and then hand them to me, and then when the proper agenda item comes up, she will call you, and you, and I will call you, and you will be able to speak. Okay. The next item is the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Judge, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Okay. This is subdivision, Mr. John Lenny. I have missed Mr. Lenny. He is our roads development guy here, and I have missed him. But you're back.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What do you got, Mr. Lenny?
Good morning, Judge and Massagale Commissioners. Our first item is the interlocal agreement with the city of La Pan in accordance with the Interlocal Cooperation Act of Chapter 791 of the Texas Government Code. These are two-year agreements. It just simply states that we do have agreement that in case that one of these entities do come up with a project, this agreement has to be in place first, and of course, the project agreement will, is a separate matter. Actually, this one had been, has been out since October 2017, so the city of La Pan is just simply wanting to get back in and have this agreement in place. Road Operations recommends approving this interlocal agreement with the city of La Pan.
So you're recommending approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, sir, Judge. I make a motion. Inter, interlocal agreement with city of La Pan.
I'll second, even though Mike Stole's signed it, but I'll go with that.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Eagle, to approve the interlocal agreement with the city of La Pan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries 5-0.
Judge, our second one is the lease agreement with the city of La Pan. Originally, this started in November of 1998, and what it entails is simply that the city of La Pan uses the old precinct one barn. And then in February of 2010, we revised that agreement. At first, it was a two-year agreement. Every two years, we'd come back. And in February of 2010, we actually made a perpetual agreement. Well, this one come up that Commissioner Andrews had been speaking with the city of La Pan, which would allow road operations to stockpile road materials in an area that's more centralized in that, in that area of the county. Our county attorney, Matt Mills, has written this amendment, which is still part of the old '98 amendment, but this also is an agreement that allows us to use their property off Starhalla to store materials. Like I said, Matt wrote it, so everything is good on the agreement. So Road Operations recommends that the court approve this lease agreement with the city of La Pan.
Okay. Any further questions? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I make a motion. We signed the lease agreement with the city of La Pan.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews.
I'll second it.
Signed the lease agreement, the city of La Pan, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Judge.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lenny. Don't be away so long. Next one, Mr. Clint Head.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners.
Okay. What do you got for us?
We have a preliminary plat of Bella Oaks Phase 2. The property is located at 1508 Knox Road, Tolar, Texas. The gross side area for this preliminary plat for Phase 2 is 182.509 acres of the W.J. Arrington Survey Abstract Number 18, the C. Arrington Survey Abstract Number 10, and the T.W. Bundick Survey Abstract Number 24. This preliminary plaque proposes to create 66 family, single-family lots. The largest lot will be 4.88 acres, and a minimum lot size will be 2 acres. According to the preliminary plat, approximately 11.25 of the proposed Phase 2 will lie in the Granbury Independent School District. And the remaining area being approximately 171.259 acres will be in the Tolar Independent School District. This preliminary plat is located in the rural district and precinct one, will be served by well and onsite sewage facilities. This is the second phase of the 208.306 acres concept plan that was approved at November 24, 2020 Commissioners' Court. There are approximately 10,260 linear feet of streets being proposed with this preliminary plat. There was a variance that was approved back at the November 24, 2020 Commissioners' Court for Section 2, Section 6.4b concerning the maximum length of any block or street segment to allow, for the block length to be plus or minus 1,840 feet. There are no new variances associated with this preliminary plat. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat, Bella Oaks, subdivision Phase 2, as presented. I think we have a speaker.
Mr. Lacroix.
Good morning again, Judge, Commissioners. Joe Lacroix with Barrett-Hampton Brown Engineering here on behalf of Legends Land Development. Wanted to thank Clint again for presentation this morning. Be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay. Now, this is partly in Granbury ISD, and the rest of it is in Tolar ISD.
That's correct, yes, sir. The school district line runs just on the west side of Knox Road, cutting through the property.
Okay. Clint, you good with this?
I recommend approval. Thanks very much.
Okay.
Yeah, Judge, I'd like to make a motion to approve the preliminary plat of Bella Oaks Edition Phase 2.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the preliminary plat of the Bella Oaks Edition Phase 2.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. This now brings us to financial. Ms. Kidd.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. For this court, I would ask that you consider payment of invoices in the amount of $376,827.51. You've also received a spreadsheet regarding invoices over $10,000, and if you have any questions regarding either, I'm here to answer them.
You've checked and double-checked?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is actually a pretty low one. The last time was up there.
Yes, sir.
So do I hear a motion to go ahead and pay the bills?
Judge, I make that motion. Judge, I'll make that motion to pay the bills, $376,827.51.
A motion's been made by Commissioner Cotton to pay the invoices for the period January 21st, 2021 through February 3rd, 2021, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Now, this brings us down into the miscellaneous section. C1. Consider setting the hearing date for consideration of the emergency service district petition. I do know that something came out yesterday, and I forgot the date, that there is a workshop.
Workshop is the 22nd.
Of February.
That's correct.
Okay. We got a workshop that's set on February the 22nd.
It's here.
Now, we still need to set the hearing date for consideration of the emergency services district. Do you want to set it farther out so that we can have more than just the one workshop?
Judge, I got an idea.
What?
I got an idea.
All right.
Oh, there's no way, excuse me, there's no way we're going to get a May ballot. So we're looking at a November ballot. So my, my input strict only would be that set it out 60 days or maybe 90 days. Give us everybody a chance to have a, more than one workshop. Still gives plenty of time to get it on a ballot. I think the deadline to get it on a, uh, November ballot would be somewhere in, I think, in July. So we got plenty of time. We don't need to, we really don't need to push this, but that would be my suggestion. But I'm open for other suggestions.
I like this idea, to push it out enough times so that we can have two or three workshops, because it's a pretty serious matter. It really is.
Agreed.
And I'd like to get some good involvement from various people, so, um, but y'all want to, I like your motion of about moving it out 90 days, Mr.?
About May 25th.
Second.
It's, it's Tuesday. It's Commissioners' Court that day.
If that's your motion, I'll second it.
That's motion.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to set the hearing date for May 22nd, 2021, for the hearing date for the emergency service district petition, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Item number two.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to disrupt you here, but someone said the 25th, and then you said the 22nd. I'm confused now about the date.
What did you say?
The, the, the date for the hearings is 25th. The workshop that we've got is coming up the 22nd of this month. Yeah.
So, May what?
May 25th for the, for the hearing. The first workshop is February 22nd.
Yeah. So the hearing date is May 25th. That's a Tuesday for the Commissioners' Court. Okay. Got that, Katie?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Good. All right. Item number C2. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding rules of procedure, conduct, and decorum at meetings of the Hood County Commissioners' Court, Revised Version 2021. Commissioner Eagle.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. So, last Commissioners' Court, this was on the agenda to talk, just talk about the rules of decorum that we've had in place since 2013. There's been a couple of statutory changes since then. And so, and then we floated around some edits and comments. And so I took the liberty to redraft the rules. And I've got three places that, that I would call the court's attention to in the, my proposed draft. Number one of them is, I think we should, we can discuss about what day we want the deadline. We've talked about Wednesday at 12:00 noon. And if that's what we want to do, we can write that in or, or put it in the draft. I've also added a citizen's comment, open comment, proposed section as item number, Roman numeral four, C. And that complies with, with some other jurisdictions that are doing this. I'm, I'm suggesting that. And then we had a statutory change back in September of 19. So really, I, I've, I've just kind of redone the, redrafted these. And I guess I would, I would suggest, open it up. If there's any citizens that want to throw anything in on it, to let them come up and say what they need to say.
Okay.
You have six.
I have, we have, how many do we have?
Six.
I only have four.
Yes, I have a new list.
You have a new one?
Addition. Not a new one, just addition.
And while you're, while you're kind of looking at that, Judge, I just want to add that, that I put the, I submitted this a week ago yesterday so that everyone would have plenty of time to, you know, take a look at these, this proposed draft and, and, you know, look at it, compare it to other drafts. And so then I wouldn't have to, there would be no one that can say, well, we got blindsided by this. I think every, hopefully, everybody's had time to review the proposed draft since they've had it for over a week.
I put the one number on.
She's the last one, isn't she?
I put number 10.
Yeah. Yeah. Is she going to speak again on something else? Because she's got, yeah, these are five.
I put number two.
Ms. Calder's amending hers.
She has one. Let's see. Well, go ahead and keep them. Go ahead and keep them. I'd rather do it that way.
Okay.
Judge, did you hear the doctor calling for me to speak on this one? She, she had written 10 on her form, but she, I don't know.
Katie, you, do you have Ms. Calder's? She, she wrote 10 on her, on her public participation form, but she wants 11. So she's, she was actually the first.
Yeah.
So she's going to be first, and then we put Mr. Biggers second. Is that right?
Um.
She wrote 10, and she meant to be.
Right. Mr. Behrens was first, though.
Oh, he was first? Okay.
For her, second.
Okay. Okay. So now, we got six. We got six.
Yes.
Okay.
For this agenda item.
Okay. For this agenda item. Do we want to give them, you know, we can decide up here as a, as a court up here, y'all want to give them five minutes apiece on each one of these?
How many you got?
We got six on this one.
Okay. So you get six divided by, well, we're going to give 30 minutes, so six and five works, don't it?
Six times five.
Give them five, because we, we're limited to 30 minutes, so you get five at this.
Okay. Each one of the speakers will be given five minutes. The first speaker is Mr. Steve Biggers. I like Mr. Biggers' comment here in general. Are you for or against such item or items? And his response was?
Who knows? Be nice to see it, obviously. There's probably a lot of parts to it, so. Thanks, Court. I appreciate you hearing me. Let's just look at the law, if we, if we could. United States Constitution, First Amendment, to petition the government for our redress of our grievances only on agenda items. Doesn't say that. Petition for our grievances. Let's get a little closer to home. Let's go to Texas. Bill of Rights, number 27, right of the people to assemble. The citizen shall have the right to redress of grievances, petition, address, only on agenda items. Nope. Doesn't say that. Wide open. But let's get a little closer. Commissioner Eagle alluded to this a while ago, 2019 legislature. Public testimony, any member, any citizen, has the right, the amount of time of a member can be limited. Yes, I agree with that. They came out with this in 51, or 551.007. But the citizens have a right to redress the peep, the, the courts. A government body shall not prohibit public criticism of a government body, including criticism, yada, yada, yada. So there's no stipulations on that other than time, not people or anything else, just time. So let's even get a little closer. Let's, how about our neighbors, Judge? You like to talk about Johnson County and your mentor. I went back in all their minutes for the last six months. Number five, public participation, wide open. Nothing about agendas. It's wide open. So I like what Mr. Eagle's doing. We, the citizens, should have the right to do this. I know for a fact, three of the five people sitting up there have made public comments that they agree with the fact that citizens should have more comments, availability of comments, maybe even a little better time to do comments. So the two people that are at question here, I think, Commissioner Cotton, you've obviously had some statements that make people a little bit concerned. Sue us. Hey, who cares? Sue us. Why should I listen, listen to people pontificate against me? Quote, sir. So a little bit of disrespect for the citizens here, I think. And certainly, the judge, I'm kind of just serving all this up to lay at your feet, because if I've heard once, I've heard six times over the last year. Folks, we are a country of laws. We're a county of laws. We're a state of laws. And I just read the law. And this is the law. And you, you, you want to live by the law, this is the law. We can be a little flexible with what, what the legislature did in 2019, but you can't ignore the fact that the people that put you in these chairs are now your citizens that you're servants to. We're not people, the servants. You're not self-employed up here. You serve for our benefit. And we should have input on that. We're not asking for a lot. 30 minutes, 10 people, whatever it takes. But there should be some freedom to be able to come up here and express our views. The law pretty much is pretty clear. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Biggers.
Uh, two things, Judge. Are you done? He's done?
Yes.
Yeah. You're done. You, you misquote me. You know, I did not say that. Go back and look at the tape and, and see what I said. Quit doing that. You know, you put this stuff out on social media, twist the words. You better go back and look and see exactly what I said. I said that if I was afraid of being sued up here for doing action, I probably wouldn't get anything done. So get it right. I did not say go ahead and sue me. So anyway, that's it. I don't want a response. If you can go look it up. Next thing. You're talking about the law. House Bill, did you read House Bill 2840? A quote. In, in that it says, "A governmental body may, but does not have to allow public to make comments about items not on the agenda." House Bill 2840 mandates that a government body allow a citizen to speak only in regard to items on the agenda. That being said, I just want to get the law straight. I'm in favor of public participation, and we'll get to that. And, and I welcome it. Matter of fact, the more, the better. That's my personal opinion, and I'm one vote. So just to make it straight, whatever law you quoted, you didn't quote 2840, and it says we don't have to do that. But I'm in favor of doing it. You don't need a response. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next is Ms. Victoria Calder. Ms. Calder?
Good morning. Thank you for the chance to visit with you today. I am absolutely in favor of the citizens having the chance to make public comments to items not on the agenda. We're in the information age, well into the information age. And I've always believed that information and knowledge is power, and it leads to wise decisions. I do believe it's important to ask yourselves, from where do we get our information? Because as we all know, there's a lot of misinformation out there. I've always believed, I've always enjoyed Walt Whitman's quote, "Listen to all things and filter them for yourselves." In listening to all things, I do think it's important that the citizens be part of that source of information. One of the most valuable resources in Hood County, right in this room, your citizens, in this room and beyond, you have people who are subject matter experts, whose life's work has been devoted to top, to fields that would be of interest to you, whether it be on items that are to be discussed today, next time, or some future meeting. You have people here who are experts in law, in real estate, in mechanics, in construction, in homeland security, in public service, in, on and on, various topics. And they are an untapped wealth of information, and the wisdom keepers in this room. Better knowledge, better information leads to better, wiser decisions. We ask that you not ignore this citizen resource. I know it is important to look at historically, what are other jurisdictions doing? That's a source of information, certainly. But rather than only look at what's been done by other jurisdictions going back to the 20th century, more than 20 years ago, consider that Hood County has an opportunity with your vote here today to set the bar, to raise the bar, to be the model for other counties, of what it looks like to truly promote and encourage a local government that is of the people, by the people, and for the people by being more inclusive of the people. And I think that's an important consideration for you to make. In November, y'all, and I, I thank you for that. You praised at one of the meetings, I think it was the first meeting in November, but there were a lot of people here. And I thank you for that. Several of you praised the, the citizens who showed up and said, we really love seeing so many people here, so many citizens getting involved in the Commissioners' Court, getting involved and participating in our local government. And yet, to say that, and I believe you meant it, but then on the other hand, to be more restrictive of those citizens, how long can they talk? How many, how many may speak? On what topics may they speak? That runs counter to encouraging the citizens to participate and be, again, of the people, by the people, and for the people through perhaps informing you. I do think that would be like me telling my kinfolk, come by any time. The welcome mat's out. We want y'all to show up. You're welcome here. And when they do show up, telling them, we love having y'all here. We want you here, but we can't give you five minutes. We can't give you the time of day to visit. That's what that's like in my mind. So if you really mean that you want to encourage citizen participation in local government, this would be one of many ways to do so. And to respect, I do respect Mr. Cotton's comments, that there are a lot of items that are actionable items where y'all need to have time to research it. You need to allow another side, if you will, to, to know, to show up. And absolutely, those are agenda-worthy items and should be. Now, that doesn't mean that citizens might not show up and bring up some of those things that should've, could've, would've been agenda items. Put them on the next agenda or another one, if they're actionable items where y'all need to vote on it, debate on it, or discuss it. But please consider this wealth of citizen information, of subject matter expertise that could also be tapped. And in closing, I would say, to quote a Jerry Maguire line, sort of, help us help you. Help us help you. If you vote yesterday, and I hope you do, to letting, to being more inclusive of what the citizens are allowed to do, please put out some public information, Hood County News, social media, of how that can best be done. Let people know. This would be better as an agenda item, but we would love for y'all to come speak to, to subjects that are of interest to the citizens, to the community. Help us help you. Let us know what you'd like that time to look like. And, and that's very much part of it. And I guess I'm out of time, but I do thank you for the chance to talk today. And I guess I'm out of time, but I do thank you for the chance to talk today.
Thank you. Next, Mr. James Jarrett.
Commissioners, Judge, citizens, I thank you for allowing this time for citizens to share their ideas, comments, and concerns. Personally, I'm a little disturbed that I'm here advocating for Hood County citizens to be allowed to enjoy free speech in the Hood County Commissioners' Court. Free speech that is not dictated by agenda or regulation, but is managed through personal responsibility, decorum, and respect for all in the airshot. It disturbs me that we're even having this conversation. Being allowed to only speak on agenda items limits free speech. Agendas are for prioritization of topics, so that interested parties can prepare in advance, in order to achieve the purpose of the meeting. Think about it, agendas don't encourage free speech, nothing of immediacy makes the agenda. Citizens don't create the agenda, they're allowed to add to the agenda, but they don't, we know that. Free speech is about freely expressed opinions, questions, different ideas, and unique approaches to resolving issues. Free speech could also be about resurfacing unresolved issues from past committee meetings, which won't be on the agenda. For example, when the Commissioners' Court commits to an action, but doesn't deliver, and it's not put back on the agenda, how do citizens hold the Commissioners' Court accountable? A specific example, when the Commissioners' Court on 11221 wished that Commissioners Andrews and Commissioner Wilson were in attendance, so that they could vote on whether or not $195,000 in CARES money should be spent on a command wagon, and the Commissioners' Court commitment was made to ask them the very first time they were in court, but this question has never shown up on a subsequent agenda, so we don't know, how would they vote? Commissioners, Judge, citizens, I have just enjoyed free speech. Thank you. Is that what you want to give up? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jarrett. Next, Ms. Christine Lefwitch.
So, I'm going to speak to Roman numeral 4C about the citizens' comment, from my own perspective of what I have experienced here at the court, and so, I'm in favor of allowing the citizens' comment time. The courts made it clear that when we want to see something on the agenda, we need to bring it to the attention of our commissioner. Either go in and see him, send him an email, and I followed this procedure for an agenda item, and it was a timely request, and it did not show up on the next Commissioners' Court agenda, as I expected it to. So, I made a second request, on which I actually copied you, Judge, this last time, and with a reminder, from the last meeting, that you had indicated you had never had an occasion where a citizen had requested something be put on the agenda, and it not be on the agenda. So, I pointed that out, that actually, I had made a request, and it didn't make it to the agenda. Well, fortunately, it's on the agenda today, so I'm very pleased about that, but what disturbed me is that my commissioner, Mr. Cotton, I had reached out to him, I had made this request, and when I didn't see it on the agenda, and I had no response from Mr. Cotton, you know, I don't know if it ended up in his spam folder, or what, but I'm of the opinion that when a citizen reaches out to their commissioner by email, that that dictates a response, either, "Thank you for your concern, here's what I'm going to do, let me know that my concerns matter to my commissioner." When I didn't see it on the agenda, when I didn't get a comment back from Mr. Cotton, to me, it almost seems like Mr. Cotton is acting in the position of a firewall, he's ignoring my comments, he's deflecting, I'm not out there sharing my concerns with everyone else around me, I brought it straight to my commissioner. And so, it's almost like a nonchalant approach to being a public servant. So, the reason why I feel like citizens' comments are very important is because, in my opinion, the procedure that the court wants us to follow of reaching out to our commissioners, has proven to not be very effective with keeping the pulse on what is actually going on in this community, what are the concerns that people have. We have four separate precincts, we have one county, and I think that when you give citizens an open comment forum, that it brings potential items of concern out in the open for the commissioners, for y'all, it gives you a heads up, it lets other citizens know what other people are thinking about in this community, and, you know, there's a lot of us out here that follow local government. There may be a person that comes up here to speak from another precinct, that brings something up that I'm not even heard of, but it might be something I'm interested in, it might be something I want to get behind. There may be someone in my own precinct, who's brought up an issue that I'm not aware of, and the same type of thing, I want to get behind it. So, I just see it as a way for citizens of this community to network on local issues, and maybe that's the rub of this court, is that we're going to have citizens getting together to network and bringing things up, where we have some on the court who may want to exercise greater control over what I would consider the what and where agenda. Sometimes, it seems like things are on the agenda, and decisions have already been made about them, and so, whether or not a citizen comments on it, it's not going to have any potential impact on that. So, I would urge each of you to carefully consider the message that you're going to send to the community, should you deny the citizens' comment time in these rules of decorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lefwitch. Next, we have Mr. Todd Evers.
Of course, I'm for Dave Eagle's approach to opening up the agenda, or comment section to 30 minutes, or as much as we need for people just to say what they need and their concerns with the Commissioners' Court. Let me say that, I think this, if you go against this, you're just trying to silence the citizens of Hood County, and it kind of goes hand in hand with what's going on throughout this country. Politicians want to do what they want to do, and not be held accountable, they want to say what they want to say, and not be accountable to their actions. You're a representative, a civil servant of the people, by the people, not for your own personal gains. You took an oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and of Texas, yet you want to silence your citizens and your critics. I'm going to reference the Second Amendment, as I think it bears, has bearing on this discussion, how it pertains to this agenda item. The Second Amendment of the U.S. Constitution is intended as a threat of, or the fear of violence, used against the government or people in government to maintain honesty and integrity, for the protection of all rights given to the citizens in the Constitution from government overreach. It is intended as the most extreme violence, but violence nonetheless. I keep hearing, after the storming of the D.C. Capitol, all these representatives and senators continue to say, "There is never any reason for violence." If that's true, then please name me one free country that has gained its freedom, or defended its freedom, without the use of violence, or the fear of violence. It is a simple fact, that is why wars and revolutions are brought about, they are waged in the name of freedom. These same politicians who send countless troops to enact violence all across the world, didn't like it when it was on their doorstep. See, one man's terrorist is another man's freedom fighter. The hypocrisy and irony is laugh-a-bud best, which brings me to local governments, you feared nothing from your actions, either. You need to realize, there are always consequences to your actions, so now you want to say whatever you want to say, do whatever you want to do, and not have the citizens speak out against your actions, or criticize you. Well, why don't we just all give you a participation trophy? You don't want to get your feelings hurt? You shouldn't have taken this job. What's the matter? Oh, the way I see it, if you would do what you promised to do when you took your oath to represent the citizens of Hood County, and what's in their best interests, and not your own, you would never have anyone, even in this meeting, to challenge you. I say that because of my first meeting, when I got here, it was just my life and my eye in this meeting as citizens, and it's grown ever since. No citizens of Hood County probably won't storm the doors of the Commissioners' Court with guns blazing, but they might find you in a public place, if they can't tell you this in the Commissioners' Court, and embarrass you. You should fear that, you should fear that every decision you make, that doesn't represent the good of Hood County, should be brought about light, and discussed and criticized. That is what freedom of speech was intended for. I'll take you back to a couple of Commissioner's Court meetings, I was watching a clip online of you, Judge Massagill, state that you have never disrespected anyone in Commissioners' Court. I had to stop that clip, rewind it, watch it again and again, and laugh at your statement, because you started disrespecting, demeaning, insulting, and tried to intimidate me four separate times in this here Commissioners' Court, because I challenged your tyrannical authority. How'd that work out for you? So, you wanted to mean, disrespect, and intimidate citizens, but you don't want them to do it to you? Much hypocrisy? Now, typically, where I'm from, no one would disrespect me, like you did, without me going outside with them and earning that respect. But I was also aware that, if a man's going to dig his own grave, then who am I to stop him and take the shovel from him? You were doing such a good job. It was only after you insulted Ms. Dix, that someone decided to tell you that every time you opened your mouth, you were tossing another shovel full of dirt out of that grave, then you quit, because it doesn't look good when you insult a pretty lady. But it did give us some insight into your thought processes, every court session has since. Who are you to question me? I am the king, I am the throne, I will make the rules up as I go, and no one will stop me, as you've done countless times, even after being consulted by the county attorney that is wrong what you are doing, whatever you're doing, but you do it anyways. That serves what we consider a dictator, the rules don't apply to you. I'll leave you with this bit of advice, there's a large sign on my business that says, "Do right and fear no man." The flip side of that coin is, "Do wrong and fear every man." So, if you feel like I've disrespected you, I'm always at your convenience to take that walk outside with you, sure, there's a little red wagon outside that needs fixing, or should I just give you your shovel back?
Thank you, Mr. Evers. Ms. Annette Samuelson.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll be really quick, I just wanted to say that I agree with everything Victoria said, and one of the things that I noticed and thought about while I'm sitting here, and when I was coming today, I was hoping there'd be a lot more people here to talk about the citizen input, and I really expected there to be more, and I started worrying about the way the room is set up, and the, you know, we still have the rows blocked off, and is that really still necessary, and is it really doing what you intended? Because if you look out, the people that are here are clustered together, which is probably not what we want to do. So, as you go through the rules on decorum, just think about the way the room's set up, and is it inviting for people to come and speak, and is it time to change that, and not have the rows blocked off, at least not in the way they are? Is there a better way to do it, so that you can achieve your goal of having people spread out, instead of clustered together in rows? And that's just a thought that I had while I was coming here today, but, as I said, I agree with Victoria's, pretty much, everything she said, and thank you again for letting me come up and speak, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sharon Sheelander.
My kind of like Victoria, I put down against, and I'd like to put for. I'm definitely for citizens speaking. I do have some comments, though, that I'm kind of against. I agree with everything that's been said this morning, as far as letting citizens speak out. That's one of our constitutional rights, is to be able to address our government, and let them know what our feelings are. There's a couple of things I want to, or one thing I want to address on here, and it's to Commissioner Cotton, because I know when the other gentleman was talking, and he said, you said, "Just sue us," or "Let them sue us," and you did say that, it wasn't in the citizens' remarks, it was done when we were talking about purchasing the RV, and I believe Commissioner Eagle brought up a law, or whatever prohibiting purchasing that large of a purchase, without going through some open bidding and stuff, and that we could be sued, and you said, "Let them sue us." I find that, I sit out there, and I thought about that, and I thought, that's coming from a member of a court, that you would actually say, "Let them sue us." I don't think a House bill that was written before 2019, but that doesn't matter to me, to me, I believe the Texas Constitution was the supreme law, and that if it says that the citizens have a right to address their courts, or their government, then that is the supreme law, and should be allowed in some manner to do so. So, I definitely support what Commissioner Eagle has proposed today. Thank you.
Okay, that's, thank you, Ms. Sheelander. That concludes all the people that I have had wanting to speak on item C2. So, after that, do I hear a motion from any of the Commissioners?
Sir, I would like to move that we allow citizens' comments to speak on non-agenda items during the first monthly session, for a 30-minute time limit. Citizens need to understand, they can speak, we cannot, on the court, comment or speak or take any action. That has to be fully understood. And respectfully, if your time is up, please take a seat. Close my motion.
I'll second that.
A motion's been made in second, to allow the citizens to speak on non-agenda items for a maximum of 30 minutes, and that would be five minutes apiece, or a maximum of six people per session, and that to be held on the first regularly scheduled Commissioners' Court of each month.
Okay, Judge, you got the motion in second, and I've got that in these proposed rules that I've given you. I put in parentheses, first, second, or each. Commissioner, to my right, has made it for the first, so we can just mark out second or each.
I agree.
And we, we're, we can, I guess we can vote on this, and then vote on the rules decorum, because that's what's on the agenda.
Well, the other one...
Is there one other thing, if you don't mind?
Oh, the date.
Yeah, can we do that now, along with his motion, and add to it, that it's on the Wednesday, where we got a blank there, and put in Wednesday?
I'm, I'm, I'll second that, if, because I have, I've had a chance to talk to our staff, and, you know, they, this, these agenda items get bottlenecked, to get them, you know, if they, if they get their issues, or the request for an agenda item in by Wednesday noon, which is reasonable, I think, now that I've looked at it, and talked to people that are having to do it, maybe they can get the first draft of the agenda out by Thursday afternoon. So, I agree with the Wednesday deadline, because I agree that we need to have a chance to review all material that goes with the item well in advance, so that we feel comfortable voting one, up or down on an item. So, yes, sir, I agree with the Wednesday, I'll put that in.
I would like to add something else to that, I think that sometimes the placement on the agenda is important, and I don't know if this needs to be decided here at this time, but I think there are times whenever somebody just wants an agenda item to be last, and I think that it would be appropriate to allow a request to place your agenda item last on the agenda, and whoever, whoever asks for last first gets it.
Well, that has come up only about four or five, maybe three or four times, I guess, since I've been on the court, and it's usually something that's going to go on for a period of time.
Especially executive sessions, executive sessions.
Yeah, an executive session, we tend to always put those last, so that the other people, county employees, can go back to work, rather than sitting there while we're debating something in an executive session. So, if anything ever has executive session, that should be a last item under C miscellaneous.
And I think that sometimes, there may be some jockeying for position, somebody may be holding on to something, and turning in at 11:59 on Wednesday afternoon, to make sure that it's her Wednesday morning, to make sure that that ends up being last, and I think that it would be better just to, just to allow that, because those are usually going to be heavy topics, that, you know, a little extra time looking it over might not hurt.
Well, how about first served, whoever, if you filed your motion... Well, how about first served, whoever, if you filed your motion first...
Let me, let me say what I've heard and what has happened. Normally, Judge, you normally ask the court about that. When we see an agenda item on there, number three or four, I have thought that I always have thought or remembered that you always ask the court, "Do you mind putting this to the end of the agenda, and it be a court decision whether to do it or not?"
Well, and, you know, and that actually came up this morning because I was looking at that, you know, with the Harden, E S and S people, and I was thinking, "Well, maybe we can move them up so they're not having to spend half the day." But there, there are a lot of issues in here that a lot of people are here to speak on, and how do you prioritize that? So, you know, I think it'd be okay, just send something in and say, "Hey, I'd like this to be last." And if it's not, you know...
Oh, Commissioner, do you, can we have a, do we, do we need to draft this in, or can we just have a gentleman's agreement that we, we can do that? Because the other thing, the other avenue that we have is that when Commissioners' Court starts, a Commissioner who feels like we really need to bump something to the end can just make that motion and do it. So we've got two ways, but I'm, I'm in favor, I mean, I'm fine with, personally, I'm fine with the idea.
As a matter of fact, Commissioner, we actually asked to put something up on the front. I've gotta go, or would the court mind if I move up to the front?
Right.
And have legitimate reason, and we've, we've agreed to that, so...
We need that option of being able to, you know, rearrange, slot, or be able to, you know, when we come to court, maybe move something up because of time constraints or because of the issue that's at hand at that point.
I agree.
Yeah.
So do we need to draft, do I need to...
I think we can do it as a gentleman.
I think we can, too. All right, I'm good with that. I just...
So that the only change to, Commissioner Eagle's proposed is to put Wednesday on page one and then on...
Item 4C. Isn't that right? Commissioner Wilson? But it's in 4C, it was your changes.
Yes.
What?
Just allow the...
Oh, yeah, 4C, and we mark out "Second" and "Each."
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Leave first as it is.
It leaves first. The first regularly scheduled Commissioners' Court, which is gonna be the agenda that the citizens that want to speak should get here early to figure, fill out a public participation form, because you're still gonna have to do that because you're gonna have the first six to speak for five minutes. So you need to come down early and fill out your public participation form, okay?
Judge, we got one more thing.
Is that what we do? I didn't know that you'd have to fill out a form and speak. Make a public comment, would you?
I would, I would think you would, yeah. How do we know they want to comment?
Yeah, that's for the record, and we gotta know what you're gonna, how many you're gonna be speaking. I mean, if you got 12 people that want to speak on something, I guess...
Here, let me, let me, while we're talking about this, let me just, this is Johnson County, and they just have it listed as public participation. We can put that, you know, we kind of chatted about this, Judge, right before we started, that where are we gonna put this on our standing agenda? And this will be right after the public hearing section, so, but yeah, I would think you would need to fill something out so we know you want to speak. You don't have to tell us what you want to speak about, but you, we would need your name and address that you're, and that you want to speak in the public participation.
Right.
And that, I think it's spelled out in our, my proposed draft.
There you go.
So we still good, then?
We're good. Okay.
Judge, sorry.
Oh, yeah, Matt.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're following the law here, real quick.
Yes, please do.
Okay, under 551-007A, or excuse me, B, my concern is that the proposed Roman numeral 4B doesn't really fit with 551-007B, okay? So 007B says, quote, "A governmental body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on the agenda for an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding the item at the meeting." What we have here is, you get five minutes, but it's limited to 30 total, and it's six people get to speak. So if you got 10 people here who want to speak, I mean, well, I mean, you can, you can adjust it on the fly or whatever, but according to this, you can cap under C, 551-007C, you can make rules to cap the time they have, but you can't make rules to cap the number of people who get to speak. If there's 50 people here who all want to speak, 50 people speak. Now, you can make it one minute each or whatever, but 50 people here want to speak, they all get their turn.
Is that under the item agendas?
That's, yes, under agenda items, yes, sir.
Agenda items only?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And this, of course, was passed after the previous rules were adopted six, seven years ago, whenever that was. So I just want y'all to kind of be clear on that, that everybody who wants to speak gets to speak, but you can limit their time.
Yeah, and item, item number 4D says in matters of exceptional interest, the court may by majority vote either shorten, lengthen, time allocate, and all that. So we've got discretion to, if we get a bunch of people in to say, "Hey, there's 20 people in here, and we're gonna give them 1.5 minutes each," or something like that. Or y'all go huddle up and decide the six people that want to talk and the other ones not, you could do that, I guess.
Now, so Matt, the big deal is, is that we can limit the number of time. So you got the 30 minutes. So like, if it's 30 people, let's just use that for easy math. You got 30 people that want to come up here and speak about something, they each get a minute apiece. We can do that, so they all get to speak.
Right, yeah, just, I just want to make sure we don't have language in there that says that, you know, no more than six people on a topic get a turn.
No.
I think that would run afoul of 557, 551.
That's not on there, so...
Okay, I just want to...
That's why I'm saying, is that the people that are gonna want to speak need to fill out these public participation forms right away when you get here. The sheriff is always here before nine o'clock, so they need to fill out the public participation forms, and then the sheriff will give them to Ms. Lang, and then Ms. Lang will correlate them, put up, up in the summary so that I can have them up here at the bench, so...
Yeah, I just want to kind of clarify that point before y'all vote, sorry.
Good.
But, but, but just one more thing. You weren't, you weren't indicating that, that we've got something wrong with number 4C, where we do say, "The time allotted is five minutes for each for a total of 30 minutes." That's under public participation.
Right, I mean, you could...
Is that a conflict?
I, I mean, to your prior point way back half an hour ago, I don't think that the, the open participation is mandated. I mean, I think it's discretion, you know? And so if you're doing a discretionary thing, I think you can say, "Okay, you know, you can make it 30 minutes and five minutes each," whatever. I mean, I think you're okay. It's, it's the agenda item thing, just make sure that we don't cap the number of total speakers as it was before in the rules.
Yes. Okay. You got all that down, Ms. Lang?
Yes, sir.
You got, all right. Is there any further discussion on, on Commissioner Wilson? I guess that was your motion and seconded it by Commissioner Andrews, correct? With modifications by Commissioner Eagle and Commissioner/County Attorney Matt Mills. Now, on your, so after that, all those in favor with those additions, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 5-0.
And at the risk of, can I just ask one thing, just to be technical here? The motion was on the open meet, open agenda item, really. What we need to do is approve the new rules of decorum as modified and drafted, I think.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second it.
Okay. So a motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to actually adopt the rules as adopted with these interlineations that we made here this morning, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. All those that, I mean, Commissioner...
Eagle and Cotton.
Sometimes I forget who's sitting next to me here. By Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
So we got the, we got some new rules of procedure, conduct, and decorum at meetings of the Hood County Commissioners' Court. Good job, Mr. Eagle. All right. Item number three, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the scheduling of public workshops, town meetings, and public hearings as covered in Part Nine of the Rules of Procedure, Conduct, and Decorum at the meetings of the Hood County Commissioners' Court. Mr. Eagle?
Okay, the reason that this is on here is some of our staff contacted me because they knew I was working on these, a redraft of the rules, and I was questioned as to how, you know, we're getting, people don't know what they need to do, if they need to schedule a workshop or a town hall meeting or a specially called meeting that's not really a regular type of meeting. And my comment or my response to that is actually it's in the Rules of Decorum in item number nine, and this is more of a call, this to people's attention, that if you need to schedule a workshop for some item related to county business, that art, that rule or Rules of Decorum number nine addresses that, and it says, "The Commissioners' Court shall conduct town meetings, public hearings, et cetera." And it says, "These rules of procedure, conduct, and decorum will apply to that," which means you need to get with your judge or one of your Commissioners to schedule a, a public meeting or a workshop or what have you. So that, this is just for clarification. I don't know if anybody else has any comments to that or has heard any...
Yeah, I've been a little, you know, being the new guy here, trying to figure out how, how these things work. There've been a couple of meetings come up that I didn't know. One, one Commissioner was gonna be out of, totally out of the county during one of these, and it seems to me that it would make sense if we were all able to attend. So like, the first thing, whenever an agenda item gets put, put out there or a special called meeting, workshop, that we find out if we can all make it or not. That's a, I know that those, those things, there's really only five people that have to have permission, for lack of a better word, to be in the room at the same time, and that's us five, and we need to be able to make sure we can all be there.
I agree with that, because as an example, if they just had a prime example, that the workshop for the ESD moves, I think now, this, you know, the 27th is the fourth time that's been scheduled because of scheduling issues. So, you know, I fully agree.
Yeah, I would like there to be some mechanism to, "Hey, everybody, can you, here's, here's the date we're looking at," and then we all reply and say, "Yeah, that, that date works."
I think that Shannon and Brenda were working together in getting those dates with all of us, hence why it was moved four times. But, yeah, I think that Shannon and Brenda work well together in finding this out, and I totally agree with what you said.
And I think that what we're, one thing that we're looking at is to have a mechanism to submit agenda items that were all notified. So if it's a workshop, then it goes on there, and it says, "This is, this is the topic on that workshop," so we can, at that time, say, "Can't make it or can't make it." But Shannon's trying to, I think she's working with Drew on trying to set something, some type of communication, that...
Well, the first thing that happens, just like those ESD meetings up there, they're gonna say, "We need a workshop." The first thing, they're gonna have to circulate and say, "We're trying to get together an ESD workshop," is this date, and propose some dates to everybody. And the five of us need to be notified, so that goes on our calendars right away. So I think that's what they're doing, really.
And I would like to add the possibility that we consider, especially on workshops, that it not just be limited to daytime, because if some people are possibly requesting a workshop, you know, to discuss something, you know, try to, you know, possibly an evening where we can get some participation. I'm saying it's gonna be that way every time, but, you know, there's, you know, as we see in the audience today, limited number.
Well, like this, yeah.
If it's something that warrants a workshop to discuss something, then, you know, we look at possibilities, does that workshop warrant, you know, after, after five o'clock, you know, scheduled?
Especially the ESD, that's a very special deal. That's calling for voting, taxation, that's a big topic. That's why we need to have, in my opinion, at least three workshops, and one of those workshops should be in the evening. I agree with that, Commissioner Wilson. So everybody has an opportunity to attend. But I think we got that covered with Shannon and Brenda working together and getting notice out to us right away about the workshops, and getting that on the deal, and then getting the workshop dates posted. Bill, okay, good point, good point.
I think Dave's point, though, is still needs to be sponsored, a workshop by either a Commissioner or the judge.
Oh, sure, sure.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Well, I think the rules cover this. Just like you said, to just point out for clarification, it's in there. You want a workshop, contact one of us, and then turn it over to Shannon and Brenda immediately to get in contact with all five of us, and let's get it posted.
We all agree, again.
So I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to, to vote on this, then, okay? So this brings us to item number four, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the appointment of an FCA agent and to present Hannah Hoffman to fill such F A, FCH agent position for Hood County AgriLife Extension. And I'm glad to have, looky here, we got the man himself, Brady. They didn't trust you with that to St. Louis down here with everything down here. Boy.
Thanks, Judge, I appreciate it. As Judge said, my name's Donald Kelm, I'm the District Extension Administrator for Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service, District Eight, located in Stevieville, which Hood County is one of my counties. Again, on behalf of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension, I appreciate, I want to extend our appreciation for the support that Hood County provides, the extension program here in Hood County. As you know, Kelly was fortunate to move on personally out closer to home and take a FCH position out there, which in turn left us a vacancy last February, March. We were right in, we had it announced, we had interviews, we got the interviews completed, we had individuals selected moving forward with. I was in the second step and got shut down by COVID, and, and we, with the budget concerns at the state level, there was a mandatory freeze put on, I wasn't far enough down the road. So that's why we're here today, and that's why it had been still open because of the freeze that Extension was having to take part in. With that being said, then we were asked to identify positions, priority positions in our district. Once we got down the road a little further, Hood County FCH was one of my priority positions to get filled and go external. Fortunately, we were able to do that. Fortunately, we had applicants, and fortunately, one of our applicants was the young lady that I was in the process of moving forward with back last March. And again, she impressed us again the second time around. We called her in to interview and so forth, and we were all in agreement, we being myself and Brady and our regional program leader for Family Community Health. And with that being said, before we made the final decision, I asked her to, asked her to come and where we could face-to-face visit with her, especially Brady and LeAnn, they're in the office, and, and she did. That is why she's not here today. I apologize for her not being able to be here. She was not allowed PTO time from her current job. So I talked to Brady, and Brady talked to the judge, told him our situation, and that's why Hannah wasn't able to be here today. With that being said, you, you've got the resume. I would like to present Hannah Hoffman for the County Extension Agent, Family Community Health Agent here in Hood County with a start date of March 1. Hannah was, received a BS from Texas A&amp;M in Public Health, got her Master's of Public Health from Texas A&amp;M as well, and you can see some of her experience that she had. The references, one being from American Diabetes Association, and then the other reference I had just validated our opinion of Hannah and what she brings to the table when I received comments from them. There are times, you know just as well as I do, there are times when the references, "Oh, that's just so-and-so, and they're gonna say good things." But... But, what I, when I put credit in them, is when they hit everything that you're thinking, and they hit it on the head, and that was what the references did. So, again, I want to present Hannah Hoffman for the FCH position, with a start date of March one.
I move that we appoint her as the FCA agent for Hood County, beginning March first of 2021. Y'all's recommendations are sterling and spot on. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? I have one question, can she cook as well as Kelly? We got some good meals out of that, I want y'all all to...
During, during our two virtual visits with her, and one face-to-face, she is, she understands she has some big shoes to fill.
Okay.
So...
Okay. With that, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Thank you very much.
You bet, thank y'all very much.
Good to see y'all, thank you for coming down.
You bet, and again, on a personal note, just remember, for commissioners that are new this year, put that first Wednesday in November on your calendar, that's our District Eight Judges and Commissioners Conference.
Okay.
Where's it going to be this year, you know?
If COVID allow, I mean, if, if it allows, I'll be back in Waco at MCC, just because of the central location of it.
Right, okay.
But if not, we, we'll be back at Glen Rose, Judge Chambers, I'm sure he'll work with us again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Good deal, thank you, thank you, Brady. All right. All right, the next item is Item Number Five. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve a property tax abatement for Luminate Generation Company LLC, constructing a battery storage facility located at 4950 Power Plant Court, Granbury, Texas, may require executive session. Shay, you still of that opinion?
Yes.
Okay. So, at this time, I guess we're going to call a brief recess, so that the Commissioners' Court can adjourn into executive session, and y'all can stand down, and then we'll call back in hopefully a few minutes. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's now 10:59, and we are back. The Commissioners' Court of Hood County is back from executive session, wherein we were discussing abatement for Luminate Generation Company LLC. Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll, I'll try to make that motion, and see if I can't make it right here. I'll make the motion to approve a property tax abatement for Luminate Generations Company LLC, constructing a battery storage facility located at 4950 Power Plant Road in Granbury, Texas, subject to the acceptance of the final contract.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the abatement for Luminate Generation Company LLC, subject to the appropriate contract being acceptable, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Okay, that brings us to Item Number Six. Consider and take appropriate action to award a contract for RFB 2021-002 Oil and Transmission Services. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. The bids for the Oil and Transmission Services, RFB 2021-2, were opened on February 2nd, 2021, at 2:00 PM in the purchasing department. After examining the two qualified responses, and discussion with the Sheriff's Office, it is the suggestion of purchasing to award the contract to Expressway Car Care, and also to name Midas as an alternate vendor.
Who is the alternate?
Midas.
Okay.
We didn't vote on this the last...
No, no, sir. No, we did...
We discussed it, I know that Steve Smith brought it up, didn't he?
We, we did, we did the vehicle maintenance contract.
That's right.
And so this, this one is separate, this one's a little more simple. Basically, it just covers certain oil change, radiator transmission services, and that has been done in the past as a separate.
I got it, I got it. Okay, do I hear a motion?
Let's see, Judge, I'll make the motion to, let's see, to award the contract for RFB 2021-002 Oil and Transmission Services to Express Care, with a backup or secondary going to Midas. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Cotton to award the contract to Express Care with backup to Midas, seconded by Commissioner Andrew. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Item Number Seven. Consider and take appropriate action to allow Dr. James Flynn of the University of Houston to park a NOX monitoring trailer at the southwest corner of the existing ozone monitor station located in the Annex One parking lot. Mr.?
Yes, we've got a couple of speakers that are going to come and talk to us.
Y'all monitoring our air?
Yes, sir.
Are we passing? If you're not passing, it's something wrong with your trailer.
Not my trailer, too.
I'm Michelle McKenzie, I'm the Air Quality Program Manager for the Hood County Clean Air Coalition, and with me is Mark Franco, who's the Board Chairman, and I brought... Those on monitor that it's in the Annex Parking Lot, please make sure what that is. The trailer that backed there, we'll come deal with. And because of COVID measures with the University of Houston, Dr. Flynn wasn't able to make it, so we're here as, speaking on his behalf. So, as part of the TCEQ Rider Seven Air Quality Planning Grant with the City of Granbury, the Hood County Clean Air Coalition is helping to oversee this project that's focused on ambient air quality monitoring for nitrogen oxide emissions, which are precursors to the formation of ozone. These NOx emissions are going to be measured using a NOx monitor that is being provided through a contract with Ramball U.S. Consulting, working with the University of Houston. Dr. James Flynn of the University of Houston is leading this project. The NOx monitor will need to be located as close as possible to the Granbury Ozone Monitor, which is currently located in the Annex Parking Lot. Because of the way the fencing is, and they've got an antenna inside there, next to the monitor itself, those are all anchored to the corners of that fence, and so it's very difficult for them to move another trailer inside there. So that's why we're asking, the new trailer is going to be eight foot by 16 foot, and it's not going to fit inside that fencing. So they're asking for permission to park it in the southwest corner that's highlighted on the map, the crosshatched area, so it shouldn't impact additional parking issues or anything like that. They have already got permission from TCEQ to park it there, they will be tying into TCEQ's utility pole that's already existing there as well. He would like to put temporary chain link fence panels around the trailer once it's in place. This would be the temporary type, where the bases are set on the ground, and have sandbags placed on top to keep it from moving, but would prevent any puncturing of the asphalt. The plan is to have it set up in March, and take it down in November, this timing matches the ozone season for the North Texas area. Staff from the University of Houston would visit about once a month for maintenance, after equipment is installed that will allow collection of the data through wireless measures. The trailer equipment would include instruments to take measurements, data systems, calibration supplies, tools, and some spare parts. And as I said, electricity would be provided by the utilities that are already in place for TCEQ.
One thing I know that mentioned in that, Michelle, is that they have communicated with TCEQ, who has the contract for the placement of the ozone trailer that's inside the fence, and they're going to use their electricity, I understand they're going to use their electrician, that we won't have to be involved with that, it's not our electricity, they'll hook up to the TCEQ's electricity inside the fence.
Correct. And that is...
I would like to have, when they do that, to have Jay Riley there, just to oversee the parking of it on the, in the hashtags, I think we've got blocks there for parking that might have to be removed, but work with Jay on when they come with the trailer, when they do that.
Correct, that'd be fine.
Sure.
One of your notes says it'll only be there for the 2021 ozone season? What is that?
Yes, sir. So ozone is basically air pollution. It typically runs from March to November is our ozone season, per se. Ozone is formed typically when there's a lot of sunshine and heat. It's formed from the NOx emissions that we're monitoring, as well as VOC emissions, which are volatile organic compounds. And so it's primarily a summer issue, but it, it can form as early as March, when we have warm days.
But the season's March through November, that's...
Yes, sir.
And what's the, just want to make sure I understand myself, so what if, what are they trying to accomplish? They're just monitoring?
They're basically looking at the specific NOx emissions that are contributing to the ozone, to basically try to date how old those emissions are, so we can identify if the NOx emissions are emanating from Hood County itself, or if it's based off of transported emissions coming from DFW or somewhere else.
And they can, they can make that determination, that it's either coming from us, or from out east of us?
That's, that's the idea of the, of the research project, yes, because they, as the NOx emissions are formed, they go through different transitionary stages, and so based on which form of NOx you have, it can determine how old that NOx emission is. And that's our, our primary issue for ozone for Hood County, is basically a transport issue.
So, in November, they're going to remove the trailer and the fence?
Yes.
The additional fence will be installed?
Yes.
Again, county's out, zero dollars.
Zero dollars. This is all paid for by the grant, the Rider Seven Air Quality Planning Grant, with the City of Granbury.
She sent a picture, I don't know, everybody got in their pack up, that's a picture of one of those trailers, and what it's going to look like, it's just a enclosed trailer.
Yeah, it's, yeah. Little eight, I think, eight by 16 foot.
One, one last question, and I think, I think everybody's asked some good questions, but, so, if, could their findings end up costing us more money? Like, if you go get your license plate, or, you know, how's that, how does that, how does that data going to be used, and will it, could it cost us money at the, the citizens' money at the end of the day?
This particular monitor won't, because it only is monitoring just for those NOx emissions, which are not part of the ozone attainment question. We are currently sitting very well at a 66 design value, so we're, we're in good shape right now. But, the ozone monitor is the one that, is the regulatory monitor, that will determine if there's problems in the future.
So 66 is good?
Yes.
And what do you call that?
Parts per billion.
And what's bad?
About 70.
70 is the, the current standard.
Okay, thank you.
And that monitor's already in place right now?
The ozone monitor is in place, it has been in that location since 1999, there was an agreement drawn up between TCEQ and Hood County. And initially was for five years at a time that it had to be renewed, but I believe in 2014 or 2015, the last time it came up for renewal, I think it was done for 10 years. So it's probably going to be coming up again in the next few years.
That's the contract with TCEQ.
Yes, sir, that's the contract with TCEQ.
Well, you know the air is cleaner in Granbury than it is in Dallas, right?
Oh, absolutely. Dallas is having some, other, other issues. The ozone standard was just finalized again back in December, but because of the new administration, it is going to be under review again. But if it stays where it is, then it was kept at 70 parts per billion, as far as December 2020.
Just as I mentioned for the court, you know, that, that parking lot doesn't stay capacity, except during national elections, which this will be in and out, time we get to the 2022 election. Other than that, probably the busiest time of the parking lot is during some of the events from the Garden Club, that they use it, but ninety, most of the time, it's probably 50% full, so I don't see it impacting our ability to park for the stuff we do in the county, that's what I think.
And he tried to design it to be the least obtrusive...
Yeah.
...location.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make a motion to allow Dr. James Flynn of the University of Houston to park an NOX monitoring trailer at the southwest corner of the existing ozone monitor station, located in Annex One Parking Lot.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Cotton to allow Dr. Flynn to park an NOX monitoring trailer at the southwest corner of the existing ozone monitor station, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Thank y'all, all very much.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Michelle?
Thank you.
This brings us to Item Number Eight. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding appointment of a committee to make recommendations on county software, Net Data slash Tyler Odyssey, and data storage.
Yeah, Judge, I, I have gotten to the point, I don't even know the language to some of this stuff. This is out of my realm of expertise, and I have had a couple of experts that have volunteered to, to look into this, get with Drew, go over some of these questions that I don't know how to answer. And I wanted to see if we could move forward with appointing a committee to make some recommendations to us on some of these questions.
Do y'all want to do this? Do y'all want to do this in a workshop, where we can discuss it, and see if we, who do we want? Do we want people with expertise within the county, that are county employees, that's going to be using the stuff that we know, like Becky Kidd, and Dean Armstrong, and Drew Whitaker, people like that? Do you want any outside help from the citizens? And then what are their qualifications? I mean, I'm like you, I don't know enough to ask enough questions about something like this, but if you've got degrees in IT, or you've worked for 30 years for a company, and that's what you did, maybe that's something that you can do. Are you raising your hand, that you, that you racing that for both of them, Ms. Seeland? Yeah, you're qualified in all respects.
Are they going to speak on that?
Yep.
Yeah, I've got, I want to be on the committee by Becky Kidd, I got Dean Armstrong, I want to be on the committee by Dean Armstrong. I don't, let me see. I got also Sharon Seeland, Nanette Samristerman, and Kristin Hicks, also that signed up to talk about this. Ms. Hicks, you are first.
Oh, I'm first?
Yes, come on up and talk.
Are you ready for me?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay. Good morning. I want to be on the committee as well, so that's what I was trying to make sure that I was able to, my voice was going to be heard, and that I want to be on the committee for, I have worked in the District Clerk's Office, I've worked in the JP side, and I recently, last week, moved to the Auditor's Office, and have already seen things that can, you know, could help us if we were all on the same page, so I definitely want my voice to be heard on the committee.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
No, I think you, you work with both systems, and I, and I think that's really good. So, it's like I said, you think that you can help the Commissioners' Court decide what we should do here for the county. Fire switch and tow be over, or keep it some of the offices on Net Data, and our Tyler, whatever they're on, or seeing how that would work.
Right, because, I mean, we've recently run into some more problems, just in the last week and a half, with, with Net, with NetD, that is, you know, someone's dropping the ball somewhere, but, I mean, those are things that need to be addressed, and maybe in this workshop, if that's what you guys decide to do, or, you know, whatever, but there are ongoing issues that, you know, still are not being resolved. But there are ongoing issues that, you know, still are not being resolved.
Okay. Okay. How do you envision this committee work? How many, how many committee members do you think is a workable number? You know?
I got a provision on that. I think a minimum, probably a minimum of nine, a maximum of nine, a minimum of five, otherwise you won't get anything done. Nine's a big committee, five, between five and nine, is my opinion.
And it could be that each department or each part of the county has someone, you know, represented in there, you know, if you want to have one representative from either each JP or one representative for, for the JP's together or, you know, whatever you want to do that. But then, you know, each department that's going to be affected by this, whether we stay with one or move, you know, whatever we decide to do with that. But, I mean, so that they all feel like that they have a voice in that, I think, you know. And then if you let outside people, you know, come and talk about that, then that's up to y'all.
Okay. All right.
I like the idea of nine, and I like the idea of having at least a third of them citizens that are qualified to opine. And I know that I, I've received a text last night from Judge Dub Gillum. He is out of, he is out of, he's in school today, but he wants to be on the committee as well. So I think we, I think we need to, because we're kind of coming back to everybody that's been talking all along. And so I think if maybe we get some citizens on here as well, have a workshop, that would certainly be productive, maybe. I said certainly be maybe, so that, I contradicted myself, sorry. But I don't know, I'm just, I'm just speaking out loud here. We got auditor right now, you, Dean Armstrong, and Dub Gillum, I would, I think that he's very, as from the JP's perspective would, you know, he wants to be on there. So I'm thinking maybe we look at nine people, but that's me.
Well, and my, when I'd first come up with this, I'd actually envisioned just concerned citizens being on the committee, but still having access to you and hearing your voice and then coming to us with a recommendation.
I like that one too.
Outside of, you know, you've got a dog in the hunt, let's just put it that way. And, you know, and I would, I would kind of rather somebody from the outside, like I said, that's, that's kind of where I fit in, but I don't have the expertise to ask these questions. Nanette was helping me quite a bit with, and she's like, ask them this and that, and I'm like, can you type that up? Because I don't even know what you're saying. And so, and that's where this idea came from. I need some expertise, I need some guidance on this. And I know Nanette had volunteered, Sharon had volunteered, Jamison had volunteered, and, you know, I would rather go with a committee of citizens, of taxpayers, that have access to the county employees to get your, because your, your input is very valuable. And I would rather them be able to sit back and analyze what you're telling them and be able to make a decision from that without, you know, having to work with it later, because I think that that colors the, your decision.
I, I understand what you're saying. The only thing I would say to that is that they would need to come and watch each, you know, office perform in the way that, because, I mean, they're, they're not working with the products that, that we're working with currently. So they would need to come in and, you know, however that looks, and be able to sit down with each office that's going to be affected or, or, you know, whatever, and, and see what our problems are, what our issues are, and why it would be better for all of us to be on a separate, or, you know, all on the together, or, you know, leaving it how it is, whatever that decision is. But they would need to be able to come to each office to be able to see. And that would be up to each department head of letting people in, you know, but that's going to have to be a decision that you guys make.
So, and you think that that, that wouldn't necessarily be the case if, if you were part of the committee, because you could speak at that?
I mean, depending on what kind of questions that they want to know specifically, you know, sometimes it is a lot easier. We don't, I mean, I guess we could bring a laptop at that committee. So if we were, you know, all together in here or wherever it would be, we would have a laptop that would have access to like Icon or, you know, I don't know if Odyssey, if they have an app, a laptop that has that, but, you know, could probably get that so that they could have that, or they're not going to each individual office. I don't know. That's, that's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and let's, let's hear from some other people. Thank you very much, Kristin. Nanette Samuelson, you are next.
Morning again. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk. And also just over the last month, I just want to thank, thank you all and Drew and the vendors for allowing me to sit in on your meetings. As I mentioned to you earlier, I have 30 years of IT experience, as well as part of that was in IT audits. So during that time, I led many software evaluations through purchase to implementation, I should say go back to, a needs analysis, evaluation, purchase and implementation. My interest here is to help provide you with the information you need to make the best decision for the county, employees, as well as the taxpayers of Hood County. Anytime a software purchase is being considered, it is to solve a problem. So the starting point is to state the problem. You have to know what you're trying to solve before you know that software is the answer to your problem or is a solution. Is there another option? Is there a manual or procedural change that could, could be done to solve the problem? But once the problem is identified, referencing my experience in IT and best practices, these are the normal steps that are followed. There's a needs analysis and requirements listed and prioritized and with critical items at the front, and then must haves and nice to haves, before even looking at software. Then a request for proposal is sent and evaluated. Each vendor is ranked on how they meet the requirements. Then there needs to be a decision matrix that weighs things like response to the requirements, vendor strength and stability, their track record and references with other customers. For a hosted or cloud system, you would need to know what their security procedures are and the results of their last security audit. How are you going to get comfortable with knowing that that vendor will protect and secure the county's information? Then you look at the total cost of ownership over a period of several years, five to 10 years. Then a good, sound business case is presented with the total cost of ownership and a return on investment. From what I have observed, which admittedly is not a lot of time, there isn't a good understanding of what the problem is, nor is there a document that describes what the requirements are for each of the offices. Without this information, I'm not sure how a decision can be made on which product best fits, fits the needs of the county. Additionally, there is still work to be done to understand the total cost of ownership for all the options. As late as a few days ago, we received additional information for a security logging audit module that would need to be added to the on premises for Net Data. Putting the requirements aside, assuming that you had all of that and you'd evaluated all the requirements for each of the offices and how the vendors met those requirements, you need to look at the total cost of ownership for, for three to 10 year time horizon. There's at least five options that I've come up with just from the time that I've spent with you guys. Do nothing, keep the current mix, part of it in the cloud, part of it not, move some of the offices over to Tyler, but leave some on Net Data, but Net Data stays on prem. And I'm going to go short here because I'm running out of time, but there's at least five options. One is a total, the last is a total conversion to all of Tyler. As for cloud, the answer to the question is moving to the cloud more secure than hosting it ourselves? That depends. It depends on the controls, the processes and procedures, and the competency of the personnel managing those processes and procedures. Just being in the cloud or on premises does not inherently in of itself make it more secure. Final thought, as a taxpayer in Hood County, I do have a vested interest in helping provide this information to you to make the best decision for the county. I have heard there is money in the budget, but as, is it the right thing to do this year? We've had a pretty hard year in the county and it might not, it might, that money may be better used somewhere else. I'd be happy to work with the committee to help bring all of these options forward for you to be able to make a decision on what the best thing is to do for Hood County for the, for each of the offices and for the taxpayers. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've been, she's been really helpful. I really want to thank you. And again, you're, a lot of times you're speaking a language I don't even understand. So it's, it's good to have some guidance on that.
All right. Ms. Sharon Seelander.
Hi there. Well, first of all, I agree with everything that Nanette just said. I read her paper last night, so I agree with almost everything she says, so I'm not going to repeat it for you. So I also have had 30 years in the IT arena in data security disaster recovery. In those 30 years, I worked for EDS, I worked for Affiliated Computer Services, which are very, two very large raw data companies that do data for companies all over the world. And in that capacity, I did do mostly their disaster recovery. My experience is more with the tech user arena than with the contracts as Nanette is. And so I would be looking at more in the security, such as she was talking about with the cloud versus the server on site. I can look at both of those and determine if they're both secure or doing, is one more secure than the other. System recovery, ticket process, and user friendly or components that need to be looked at also, not just cost. So that's what I feel like I would make a, be an asset to the committee if I was chosen to be on that committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Seelander. Okay, Becky Kidd, you want?
Good morning again. My comment is I've worked with both programs for a long time. I see big differences in them. And like Kristin Hicks said earlier, just this week, we've discovered another problem with trying to get some clearances for Net Data. And it was a big problem. It's something that should have taken place two weeks ago, and after numerous calls, we finally got it taken care of. That's, that's very troublesome to me. And Kevin, you have a perfectly good IT director right there who has explained this and who would be happy to sit down and talk to you about the cloud, non-cloud, every issue that we have. I hope you lean on him because he has done an enormous amount of work to get here. And no disrespect to these ladies here, but you need to talk to the people who work this every day. They're, they're who are going to be affected most. That's the ones that need to have the biggest vote in this. You've already heard from them on numerous occasions. And the two ladies that I recall, Kristin and Melissa Barner, work with both, and they have pretty much begged you guys to go with Tyler. So I would love to be on the committee. I will give the best input I can. Thank you.
Dean?
Thank you, gentlemen. I too would like to be on the committee. I've got approximately 26 years using Net Data products. About seven of those were in helping other people correct problems, support. I've worked for the county clerk for approximately 25 years, give or take, that's five different decades, pieces, portions of five different decades. I know I don't look like I'm that old, but that surprised you. I've been here since we used books when there were no computers. I've grown through the county when we actually rented 256 meg from the appraisal district. That's, that's crazy. All right. So anyway, I've seen Tyler demos, I've been in them for the last 20 years. But obviously my, my experience with Net Data. I've trained across Texas, district attorneys, county attorneys, district clerks, county clerks, county judges, county court of law judges, district judges, assisted with jail and JP's. I've done voter registration. I've done quite a bit training all across Texas, different elected officials. All right? So I too have experience in other offices other than the one that I work in. I know the difference in software not working and someone who doesn't know how to work the software. Okay? And if anybody has any questions, I too would, I think having county people on the committee is, is, needs to happen. But I also think it's a great idea to have citizens who don't have a, a way to lean, they're just trying to find out the information that's best for, for the citizens. I think that's, that's a plus. So if, and I've also contacted, you know, members up here and offered my information to, to each one of you before. So unless you have any questions, I'm done.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. Okay. Drew Whitaker, I'm going to call you, come up here because you're just here.
I'm here.
And it's all comes down to you. So you either get the blame.
Well, I always get the blame regardless. Doesn't matter.
You know, so far in this list that I'm making up here that we're talking about, I have Kristin Hicks, Nanette Samuelson, Sharon Seelander, Becky Kidd, Dean Armstrong, Drew Whitaker, and Dub Gillum had sent me the same thing. I think he's in New Mexico right now. I don't even know if he was going to. So that's seven people, but of course I think you would have to be on the committee to get the input in from everybody. You're willing to do that, aren't you?
Absolutely. I'm willing to do whatever the court wants to do.
Okay. And, and then Dub Gillum, I think, representing that. So that's seven. Somebody threw out the number nine. I don't think it can be any bigger than nine, then you'd get too many deals. But does anybody have any suggestion for two other members? We got three, two citizen members, Nanette Samuelson and Sharon Seelander, with each 30 years of IT service. So.
Drew, can you think of anybody else in the, that you'd like to see on the committee or not?
Not really. I mean, in all honesty.
Between five and nine, seven works too, doesn't it?
Seven's a non-number.
That sounds like a pretty. I think Kevin's got somebody else too, right?
Judge Howell wanted to say something.
Judge Howell, you were using an abacus back in high school, so don't be.
Judge, I'm, I'm not advocating to be on the committee, but I will make a comment. With all due respect to Judge Gillum, Judge Gillum is fresh on the job. If there's going to be a JP on that committee, it needs to be Martin Castillo. He's the longest sitting judge, justice of the peace in the county. Martin's also been the president of our state association, so he has input and knowledge coming from all 254 counties in this, in the state of Texas. So if there's going to be a JP on that committee, like I said, with all due respect to Judge Gillum, I'm not saying that he's not qualified, I'm just saying that we have a more qualified person to be on there. And he's also the longest sitting judge in our county and has been here the longest. So that's just my comment.
Good point. Yeah, gives a JP. How about, how about the constables? We don't have a constable, now we, can we get a constable to volunteer? That way we would have most of the departments covered.
Melissa would like to be on it.
Melissa? Melissa Barner? All right. There's your nine if.
Okay.
That'd be my opinion. That sounds like a good nine count to me.
Whatever nine.
You know, in addition to that, I don't want to get out of order, but, you know, I'd like to see, I don't know if the court does that, but from the committee, I'd like to see some deliberables, some timeline. We don't want to go on through this for another year. We've been going through it for eight years.
I was going to say this is the eighth meeting.
I don't know what the timeline is. Maybe 60 days is too short, is 90 days. We have some kind of deliberable come back from the, from the committee to advise the court on how this thing's going.
I will do whatever the court wants me to do. Again, I was under the impression, the first court in December, that we were going to make a decision last court. But that got tabled. So, I mean, again, it doesn't bother me either way.
My thought is we've already got supposedly burned numbers for both of the suppliers.
Yes.
I'm saying 45 to 60 days max, hard to kick into camp. I've said that before, I'm going to stay with it now.
I'd like, I'd like to see another citizen on here. Jamison, do you feel like you can provide any input? No? We've only got two citizens. If we're going to do nine.
If we're gonna do nine, it would be nice to have at least a third of them citizens. So perhaps.
I don't know. Those two are pretty strong. Those two may make up four. I don't know if you, I mean, we gotta, I'd like the citizens on, but I mean, somebody with your qualifications. You're talking about 30 years of IT and working in it. I mean, that's, that's big time. That's a lot of experience. It's gotta be somebody with experience like that to be able to contribute to the committee. Do either one of you know anybody else?
Yeah, we haven't knocked down anybody we knew.
Okay.
Well, and you know, I mean, I appreciate what the judge says, but to some extent, somebody with some good old horse sense wouldn't hurt on the citizen's side of it as a taxpayer. So, and I don't mean that derogatory, by the way, horse, but.
You're talking about Kevin, right? Not me.
I mean, if we can't get somebody else on the citizen's side.
Kevin and I are on the same basis. I mean, we, I mean, the computer to this extent that we're talking about, I mean, I don't know what I could contribute, I'm, to do this. Well, you know, they're not gonna, they're gonna make a recommendation. It's gonna still kinda fall back on the commissioners' court to make a decision, so.
Well, I know that down at the state legislature, the committee, committee's where something goes to die. So, you know, hopefully that won't happen here.
I talked to our county attorney. As long as they're not making a decision, they can meet without the Open Meetings Act. If you do give them that kind of authority, then they're gonna have to go through the Open Meetings Act and, and do their meetings, so.
No. So they're just making a recommendation, Matt, so they don't have to follow any type of open meetings or open records, correct? So y'all can just get together and discuss it and do what you can. And I guess you don't even have to meet. It'd be nice if you could all meet together, but then you could break up into study groups too, of two or three or whatever also, so.
Can I say this? Judge Gillum did send me a text this morning about a man named Blake Murillo. Did you get a chance to talk to him, Nanette? Okay. Because I didn't know if, if Judge Gillum was wanting to be on it or if he just had, he said this guy's a, uh, let me, he's the head of IT for Double Eagle Oil and Gas. And he had sent me his name and phone number. I haven't had a chance to. His name's Blake Murillo. And it's somebody that Judge Gillum had.
That'd make nine. So Martin, do you want to do that? Judge?
Okay.
Well, yes, ma'am.
I want to make a suggestion. If we're gonna have this large of a group, then we need to have somebody that's gonna kind of head this committee. And I would like to appoint Nanette. She's done a lot of research already and knows quite a bit about it. Maybe you can kick everybody off and get started, but I think if you're gonna have this large of a committee, then you at least need to have somebody that's in charge.
I'd like to see the committee vote on it. You guys decide who you want to lead it, lead the committee.
All right. Here are the nine that I have written down. Kristin Hicks, Nanette Samuelson, Sharon Seelander, Becky Kidd, Dean Armstrong, Drew Whitaker, Martin Castillo, Melissa Barner, and Blake Murillo. So that's nine. What was?
Well, there's some.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Penny.
Each department within the county is each department represented.
Come up to the mic, please, so the, so the county clerk can get your, get you on Introduce yourself and tell us who you are, if you would.
Everybody knows who you are, Penny. He just hasn't been in there.
I'm Penny Weisand. I work for the district judge here, Judge Walton. I've been here since 1999. I, I am concerned that each department is not represented on this committee. Do you feel that that would be important? I mean, I'm, I'm looking at county and district attorney. I don't see anything there. I don't see anything for the judiciary. I don't see anyone for Sheriff's Department.
I would think that the committee would go and contact.
Could contact those. So there would be someone on that committee that would contact other departments and all.
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
So I guess, does anybody want to make a motion about the appointment of a committee to make recommendations on the county software, Net Data, and Tyler, and data storage?
I would like to make that motion, that the, the nine names, can we just get that list later? Would that be, okay? Or do I need to say them all now? That those nine names to form a committee to make recommendations on the software, Tyler, Net Data, and storage, data storage solutions.
You want to put a time limit, as Commissioner Wilson asked for?
Is that, I mean, yeah, that would be great. I just don't know if that's hamstringing the potential. Yes?
Okay. I just want to clarify something. So just to ease some worries about, I mean, part of doing the needs analysis and requirements and getting things together is talking and sitting with everybody. That's what both Sharon and I did for 30 years. But my real question is, is, so the people that are on the committee that are county employees, are they, they gonna be afforded the time to be able to participate as much as needed to be able to do the work that, that the committee needs to do? I mean, in my experience, that was always an issue with people who have, Sharon and I fortunately are, are both retired, so we have a little bit more free time and we're not being paid by the county. So I just want to be sure that it's okay with everyone, that they spend the time that's needed to be able to contribute as much as necessary to meet your timeline that you're setting, and that we can get a full product, deliverables to you in the time you want, and be able to do the work that's needed to get it done, and that they're gonna be able to have that time available during the day, during their workday, to do this. So that's, I just want to.
So I've got a suggestion.
Make that comment.
Why don't you, Commissioner Andrews has made a motion for the nine people. Martin, Kristin, Becky, Dean, Drew, Melissa, Nanette, Sharon, and Blake, which I don't mind seconding. I'll second that. And why don't we have them meet and come back to us with a, a timeline and not make that decision today? I know that Commissioner Wilson wants to move it along, but perhaps they meet and come back and tell us when they can get it back to us? Just a thought. Rather than try to figure out everything right here, right now.
I like that idea.
Oh, okay. So that's your motion. That's, we got a second motion. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item number nine, discuss and take appropriate action regarding a request from Lipan ISD to purchase county property at 267 West Lipan Drive in Lipan. Is it, we're gonna have to go into executive session on this? Okay. We're gonna convene once again into executive.
I think Dr. Carter would like to come up and, and speak on this. He is the superintendent of Lipan ISD.
He can be allowed in executive session, can't he?
Well, we're gonna take you, Dr. Carter. You get to come into executive session. It is now five minutes to noon, and we're back in commissioners' court from our executive session. So the item is discuss and take appropriate action regarding a request from the Lipan ISD to purchase county property at 267 West Lipan Drive in Lipan. So after the session, do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the school district's offer of $27,500 for that piece of property at 267 West Lipan Drive.
And I'll second that based, and add this, based on the pending contract with a similar piece of property right next door to it, of the same price, I second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of, a motion has been made by Commissioner Andrews to sell this property at 267 West Lipan Drive in Lipan for $27,500, which is the same price at another piece of property right across the road to it, to the same school district, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Five, zero. Okay. This brings us to the next presentation of report regarding citizen input related to two voting system presented during the workshop held on Thursday, January the 28th, 2021. Ms. Michelle Karoo.
Hello again.
Okay.
So, excuse me. In the packet, I provided to you guys copies of the surveys that were obtained after both voting systems were looked at on that particular date. You'll notice we had several comments. A lot of people were really happy that this was something that was made available to them. And then we had those that had, you know, that were, felt very strongly about which company we should go with. Now, when you're looking, there's 13 total surveys in here. All 13 of them leaned towards ESNS as the deciding, as their decision. Sorry. One of the comments I did want to point out in here was that, one of the participants said, "I think that they are fairly close to being alike, but I really like going with the company that has given us a good service for many previous elections." So there was a lot of positive that came out of it. We had a very good turnout, I feel, and it was an all-day-long event. Did you guys have any questions? Sure?
Speaker.
I cannot email it to you.
Yes.
You're talking about the survey?
Yes. I can get it for you.
Sure. I can get that to you. You're welcome.
Tell me this. Well, first of all, let's go ahead and get the speakers out of the way. Mac McClure is the speaker number one.
I'd first like to say that the country of Canada votes paper ballots. And I also think that $700,000 is a lot of money to spend when we don't know what the requirements are gonna be from Governor Abbott's, you know, requirements from his committee. And I remember five or six years ago, there was an election where the, they found a problem in the computer that somebody was mislabeled as a Democrat and instead they were an independent. And they passed out paper ballots within an hour. So I think that it's premature to go into this, spending all this money, and not have a clearly defined parameters. And I understand that they're gonna change and, you know, but it's, it's just, and for the two elections that we have, if we have machines that don't work, we could do paper ballots. So that's what I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Elizabeth Mercer. Good morning.
And how you guys doing? Mostly I have questions. Okay? That's actually why I came, because I heard about this and I just had some questions. A lot of them got answered in the presentation. So basically, both companies are falling under the SAFE Act. We're gonna get paper, so that works. So my big question is, as we talk about what's gonna come out of Austin, are we referencing HB 1314? Because if we are, I don't understand how that could even make it to the floor. Is the lieutenant governor even going to allow it to? And the reason for that is because the verbiage in there, while both companies meet it up to a point, the real sticking point is all of the guts inside the voting machines under this bill are going to have to be made in America. It isn't just that the companies have to be American, it isn't just that the GHQ has to be in America, it's that the components have to be made in America under this particular bill. And that's, I'm not thinking possible. I did as much checking as I could before I got here. My understanding is that in many cases, the chips and capacitors are going to have to be from overseas because we don't have what it takes here inside the country materially to make it. So if that's the case, I don't see how any of this is gonna be relevant. I don't understand how 1314 can be passed, if it even gets out of committee, or if the lieutenant governor's gonna let it on the floor. So I'm, I'm not sure what we're delaying for. If, if what you're talking about is something that can't happen anyway unless we're all gonna go back to paper, which I guess is an argument, I'm not sure why we would want to delay, since each one of these companies are already offering everything. They're meeting the SAFE Act, they're giving us all paper. I just think it's a shame that you're gonna ask people, because I've worked the elections, and I think it's a shame that you're gonna ask people who are working those elections to deal with old, outdated equipment and then oftentimes unsafe equipment. The only way you can, you can address that is if you reduce the voting locations. And that is simply a hardship for most of the citizens of the county. We want everybody to vote. Let's not make it more difficult to do so. And if anybody can correct me, I would really like to have that information. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. We're really kinda, I guess, kinda combining 10 and 11. We didn't vote on anything. Was it, the presentation of the report by you, Michelle, on the two voting systems, you just gave us the report, correct?
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's nothing to vote about on the report, is it?
There's nothing to vote on.
That, that's just the report. So really, we, we're talking about the voting equipment that we had the workshop on. Both of these gentlemen were there. Both of them presented their, their PowerPoints and explained their equipment. It was a very, very good workshop here. So what we're really doing is discussing and taking appropriate action to select voting equipment, vendor, and whether to purchase that equipment now, so that new equipment can be used during the May 20, 21 city school and the November 2021 constitutional amendment elections, or wait until the current legislative session has ended, to see if there's gonna be any requirements or whatever that you said. And that's why I said you maybe were not here at the beginning when we kinda, they both made their presentations at the beginning of this commissioners' court hearing, where both of them said that they would be willing to amend their contracts, that if there was any new requirement that was passed by the new legislature, that they would either make the requirements or remit our money back to us. So we wouldn't be out. I've done a little research, too. I talked to Representative Glenn, Glenn Rogers, and to Senator Birdwell, and he says that what they're really looking at now, the difference is, is different between election fraud and voter fraud. That they're looking at not the machines so much themselves, they're looking at the county clerks and people that are sending out all these ballots so they can mail in ballots. They want to put real criminal offenses and severe penalties for people that create the voter fraud. It's not the elections fraud, it's the voter fraud that they're really gonna be cracking down on in this legislature. But that's not to say nobody knows what's gonna happen here. But with both gentlemen saying, hey, if they do come out with some new requirement, we can fix it or give your money back. But, and like you said, there's a lot of people already made a tremendous outlay in voter equipment. So that's all I wanted to stress. All right. The next person to speak is James Jarrett.
Thank you. I'm speaking from about 50 years plus of management experience in major industries, and I have learned that the maxim is. it gets a lot of attention real quick, gets approved. Last month, it was a $195,000 command bus, RV, whatever. And this month, it's an urgent request for $700,000 in voting machines. So, I just urge the court to not let staff drive the agenda based on urgency, but to get back to the important business of making informed decisions based on needed, timely, accurate, and appropriate information from staff. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we haven't heard from this person in a long time, Nanette Samuelson.
So, hello again. So, I wanted to say that I thank Drew for recording the whole workshop because I couldn't come on Thursday, but I was able to watch about 80% of the five hours. So, I appreciate that. And while I was watching, the Hart representative stated, as he was speaking to somebody, that, about the legislative session and that it was going on right now and that there would likely be changes. So, they do, at least that software vendor does recognize that there will likely be One of the things that they said, I heard Hart say, I didn't hear ESNS, but they probably have it, is they said they had a penetration study. And I didn't know if you guys had seen the results of the penetration study and had a chance to review it from either of the vendors. That would be very, a very good thing to have so that you could see for yourself what the results of the penetration study were. I also heard something on the video that I thought was a little concerning when there was a discussion going on about whether one controller or two controllers and would that create a bottleneck or slow down the line or speed up the line. And one of the things that was stated was during the previous election that there was a security issue because people were looking over other people, voter shoulders. And I just wanted to say, from my experience of working all day long on Election Day and the various days I worked early voting, there was never an opportunity for one voter to look over another voter's shoulder. I mean, we had the line back here and as we took people in, we took them in one at a time, there was never any opportunity for anyone to look over anyone's shoulder. So, I just wanted to get that clear. Then, I wondered if you guys had seen a schematic that showed all the different components, the controller, the tabulators, the scanners, and how they're connected together, whether it's through a local area network or the Internet, or, you know, have you seen the schematic of the software hardware that you're about to purchase? Have you seen that and understand how that, those components are connected? Also, was concerned about the thumb drives, and I, yes, they say they're proprietary, but if it's a USB port, what happens if somebody slides another thumb driver, a USB in there? I didn't hear an answer to that. And then I sent you guys these articles that I found while I was researching the software and highlighted some of the comments. These were, one article was from January of 2020, so just one year ago, where a team of election security experts say last summer, they discovered some systems that are in fact online, and over 35 voting machines had been left online and we're still continuing to find more. And I highlighted several concerning things that were in this article and the other article about where the components from ESNS are sourced from and who the ownership is. But I also had the Pennsylvania, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania did an audit on Hart software. It's really long, and I wanted to send that to you, too, but I figured that I'd sent you too much last night. But I'm going to send this to you today. It talks about, they're okay with, they're recommending that it's okay with all these conditions, and it goes through every letter of the alphabet and then starts over and goes all the way to double G, double H. So, at least 30 different conditions on which the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania was okay with the implementation of Hart software. So, I'll send this to you, too. It's rather long, but very informative about everything that they did to review the Hart software. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we haven't heard from this person in a long while either. Sharon Seelander.
I just love hearing my little thoughts. Okay. I would like to go after Nanette because she's so detailed. So, I have a few things to say. I'm also against purchasing the voting machines at this time. I have a question for Michelle. How many machines did you have to remove during election?
During early voting, we removed two pieces, and on Election Day, we didn't remove any. We have sent a tech out to locations to look at them.
Okay, because I've been an election judge for a while, and so far that I know of, I've not experienced any issues, and I haven't had many of my friends that are election judge say they've had issues with the equipment. The reason I'm kind of against buying this so quickly or right now is the first election of any size requiring, that would require any machines would be, I would think, the primary. The election in November is not going to be a huge election. I think it's maybe Lepan, Toler, I don't even know if Granby has anything, maybe some proposals in that, I'm not sure. But I don't think the November election is that large that, you know, we'd have to get these machines in time for that election. The equipment, the security is talked about a lot, and I looked at the machines, and my issue, again, going back to data security and that, or anytime you have network, there's always room for fraud. Don't care, okay? So, it's been proven that some of these machines have been able to be accessed remotely and votes flipped. So, in different states, not here in Texas, Texas was good, they didn't take the machines on. But here's my question. We have equipment right now that's very secure because we're not on the Internet. So, all of the vote totals and that are on like a little smart card or whatever and brought back into the control room. I just don't know. I'd like to know the life expectancy of our equipment that we have currently. Is it still worth using or whatever? I hear that we have a couple of problems, but those can always be fixed quickly by the tech going out to the field. One of the things on our machines today that could happen, that may take the place of having paper ballots is, I'd like to know the cost, or if it can be. A few years ago, they said it could be, and it is a state law by the Secretary of State that all voting machines have a snapshot application in their equipment to take a snapshot of the ballot. So, when that ballot is hit to confirm, there's a snapshot taken of that ballot. There's no personal information on it, there's nothing on it except just the ballot. And therefore, then you have recourse to go back and check if you have to do a recount or something. I thought maybe look into something like that. Is that going to be cheaper? Would that be something to get us through the next five years or so to just maybe purchase a snapshot application to put on the equipment? This gentleman behind me can probably answer whether that can be put, the ESS guy can answer whether that could be put on our current machines or not. There's some practices locally that needed to be addressed, I think, and I think we all need to take this up, and I don't know if it's to the Elections Committee and Judge, you can help me on this because you're a member of that. There were some things that happened during our elections that was brought to my attention that brings concerns into the security. I was the Director of Security over 18,000 ATMs when I was working. And at that time, for the security of those ATMs, every piece of equipment, every input that was put into those machines had to have dual control. We don't have dual control of all of the equipment and stuff here in Hood County. So, again, I'm not trying to say anything is fraudulent, I'm just trying to say these are areas I see that may need to be addressed to bring our county in a little bit more secured process. Also, I'd like to ask the judge, a few months back, we were in a meeting with a team from the state that they had assigned to come down here and do an assessment of our election processes. Did we ever do that and did we get a answer back from them?
Yes.
We did. They came and did what was a cybersecurity assessment.
Right.
Speaking to Mike, if you would, please for the.
Sure. We had a cybersecurity assessment. We had it in October, in the middle of early voting, right Drew? We did that. They came back 30 days later, and our score was one of the second highest for a county of our size. So, we've already had that, and we do have information available if you'd like it.
Okay. So, the cybersecurity check was done with our current equipment. And again, like I say, we're also probably second highest in the state because we weren't on the Internet. So, just trying to say. Thank you.
I didn't hear that last part. You're complaining that we were second highest?
No, I said, we were probably second highest because we weren't on the Internet. One of the things, it's hard to.
Well, none of the voting equipment connects to the Internet, not either one of the ones that we're currently looking at. So, we don't connect to the Internet on anything, not on the old equipment and not on the new.
Okay.
So, that's not changed.
That's what I was, that is correct, isn't it, gentlemen? There's no connection whatsoever to the Internet, correct? Sharon, did you hear that? There's no, there's no connection to the Internet at all with either of these two systems.
Okay.
Okay? I was very concerned about that as well. Okay? Okay. All right, does anybody have any other questions or discussions about the equipment?
Judge, I'd like to just point out that this has been talked about for four years, which I'm newish.
And it's been, well, come on, come up here, Becky, so we can get it up on the thing. And also, let's talk about the budget and has it been budgeted? So, and that question to this gentleman's deal about rushing into anything, how many years have we been talking about getting new voting equipment?
Four, that I'm aware of.
And has the money been budgeted for it?
Yes, sir.
I'm not in favor of spending any money either, especially on voting equipment, you know, we do it so rarely. But when we do it, it's so very important. And when you're telling me that the last time that we voted, that there were sparks flying from these machines and that you had to unplug them and they came up here, how old is this voting equipment?
The current system is, oh, it's older than 15 years.
It's 15 years? What is the standard life of voting equipment?
What is the lifetime? I asked that.
What is the standard?
I guess when it has sparks in it, it's at the end of its life.
Well, yeah, it's, yeah.
Do you guys want to come up and speak on the?
In general, we've always taken the stance as a company that will support the voting system as long as we can find parts for it to continue supporting, supporting it. The system that's used here in Hood County now, we can keep on supporting it. This is probably one of the last three DRE counties that we have in the state of Texas. But we do, when we buy back equipment from other counties that have swapped voting systems, you know, while we may not be able to find parts on the market to repair voting systems, we go back to the systems that we've purchased from other counties and basically cannibalize them to keep counties who haven't upgraded yet going. So, the answer to the question is kind of subjective. I mean, it depends on how long we can keep replacing parts. Currently, the parts aren't available to buy brand-new from manufacturers, so we are using our used inventory currently to make repairs if we have to replace screens or using screens from other equipment.
We had, you and I had a discussion the last couple of days, right?
Yes.
And I asked you that very question about the current equipment that we've got, and you indicated to me that you were comfortable with that if we needed to another three or four years.
We've bought a lot of Ivotronics from other counties, so we do have quite a bit of stock of used equipment.
Which goes to the issue of, you know, why do we need to do this right this minute? Because we could, and we also had a discussion when you came and presented your equipment to us about 10 days, 11 days ago, I asked you, I said, well, if we pull the trigger on this, how long will it take you to, from the day we pull the trigger until you've got us up and running and trained? You said about 45 days, right?
Correct.
So, my follow-up question to that, so, we can easily get ready for a November election if we wait, you know, until June timeframe to finally pull the trigger, right, with your equipment?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That was, would you like to have a response, Tom?
Of course. So, in general, and I think I'm speaking for probably both companies on this, we build our equipment to last 15 to 20 years. Now, that's all dependent on, is the equipment maintained? Is it taken care of? Is it going to perform each election because you're doing the maintenance on it? And also, it's dependent on what Mr. Moody said, we have the same issue with our legacy equipment. We don't, there's no parts out there. So, we're taking old machines from counties that are already 15 years old, we're cannibalizing them and using those 15-year-old parts to fix other parts. You know, we, as a company, will support any customer that we have. If they want to stay on our legacy system for 20, 30 years, we'll continue to support them. But then you run into the risk of one day, you turn on that machine and it doesn't turn on. And then you come to us and say, hey, can you fix this? And we respond, you know, it's been 20, 30 years, we don't have the parts anymore. So, there is a kind of balance there, and it's really, you know, the risk versus, you know, spending the money, and that's obviously a decision for the county to make. But as a company, we take the same stance as ESNS, is that we continue to support our counties on the decisions that they make. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, if I could, if I could follow up before we get too much further in this, my initial comments, and this is pretty mature to do this today, because we don't have enough information. I've heard a lot of questions asked. And yesterday, at 10:20 a.m., yesterday, I received a proposed 14-page contract from ESNS. And yesterday, at 2:53 p.m., I received a proposed 17-page contract from Hart, from our election administrator. It's the first time I saw either one of these documents, yesterday. And they are linked, they're 31 pages total, six-point type. I've had, and I've had a chance to read these from a critical standpoint to compare the contract number one. And, you know, we just passed a rule of the norm that we want to have people bring in their information on Wednesday before the next Tuesday, and they're supporting documents, and I just got them yesterday. So, I'm going to request right now, because I've got plenty to talk about if you don't, that we table this today, and we're going to make a motion to table this, so that we can get more information, because we do have a legislative session in, and we do not know what's going to happen in a legislative session. You never know what's going to happen. You can predict, but you don't know until it's over with. And that's only three months, legislative session is 140 days. It started about a month ago, it will end the first part of May. It still gives us plenty of time to get her, so we can get the equipment, if we decide to get equipment, and get ready for annual February election. So, again, I make a motion to table this today.
Okay, a motion made by Commissioner Eagle to table the issue on selecting voting equipment vendor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second made by Commissioner Andrews. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let me, so, was it two? Is it?
I only heard two.
Well, the motion to table fails, and only, so, all opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So...
Second.
Second made by Commissioner Andrews. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let me, so, was it two? Is it?
I only heard two.
Well, the motion to table fails. And only, so all opposed?
Nay.
So to table is two to three.
Can I ask a question? We got that, that's done. Matt, have you seen either one of the contracts?
Yes.
So the ones we got yesterday, what I thought, it was just an amendment about putting in that-
Clause.
Clause about guaranteeing that if they changed anything in the legislature, you guys would protect it, give it back to us, change it, whatever. But we have had the contract prior to yesterday, I mean, the total contract with the prices. I've seen the prices for a couple of weeks. I don't know if anybody else did, but-
Well, I have. I don't know when y'all got your stuff. So I can't speak to that. Michelle sent me Hart and ESNS, I'm going to say Wednesday, Thursday, somewhere in that timeframe last week.
So you reviewed them?
I read both, yes.
I can tell you right now that I didn't get any one of these contracts and they, and I've got the, I've got the full package portfolio. I didn't get any one of these contracts myself.
Well, it's my understanding that the contracts go to the county attorney for review, not to the commissioners, because it is his job to review them. So I sent them to him. I did send them to, whenever I sent my items to the judge's office, I included all of the contracts, all the pricing. It's not that I'm withholding any information from you. If you didn't get them in your packet, that doesn't fall on me. So unfortunately, I don't feel that it's my position to send you every contract I have because you're not the county attorney.
So you just heard that? In other words, I may or may not have a chance to see a contract as a commissioner up here who's voting to spend $600,000 or up to $600,000. And I did not, I'm telling you right now, I could not get a copy of these contracts until yesterday. I have the portfolio that was sent to us right here. There's no, there's plenty of information from these two companies. There's marketing material, there's things, in fact.
Sound right?
On December, on January 14th, since it was brought up by Mr. Root, I sent Mr. Root an email. Hello, Michelle. It was brought to my attention that you're trying to schedule some demonstrations of some voting equipment sometime during the last week of January. I'm requesting that you send us a report detailing the company you decided to bring in, specific equipment they plan to show, spreadsheets, et cetera. In addition, please have them provide us with some contact numbers, election administrators of the counties that are using their respective equipment. With all the controversy currently surrounding the recent election, including alleged voter fraud, alleged manipulation of data by voting equipment, and other claims being made by some, I think it is important that we place a string emphasis on election security and election integrity as we move forward. I would appreciate if you could get this information made available to us before we try to schedule any demonstration. The demonstration got scheduled anyway. I've got handed a vanilla folder with some marketing material in it the day before or the day of. This vanilla folder right here, it's got their marketing material for both companies. And I'm not disparaging either company, by the way. I think you both got good equipment and good, you've given us a great presentation and all of it. Of course, I made a motion to table this, got a second and a voting down. So apparently, we're going to move forward with this. But I'm telling you that I didn't get a copy of the contracts from yesterday, both of them. And we just went, we've been through all kinds of pretzel logic on making sure we get material, us commissioners and the county judge, in time to make an informed decision. Six days before our meeting, we just voted for this. And I did it yesterday and it looks like I'm going to lose the vote on this. So just for the record, we are already changing our, not following our own rules.
Hey, we just voted on saying that we would get all the equipment, all of the information beginning Wednesday at noon from now on. We had been getting information late, ever since I've been on this committee, it's been passed Wednesday at noon. That's what we're going to try to cut out, that all information from this point forward will have to be in by Wednesday at noon. So what you said is not correct when you said that we're already violating our rules. We just passed this rule just this meeting. It seemed like it started a couple of days ago, but it did start today. So in any event, do I hear any further motions regarding item number 11 about selecting the new voting equipment?
Mr. Cotton?
Mr. Wilson?
I've listened to the pros and cons, listened to the comments from the citizens. Given the information that the suppliers have provided, and yes, I've read the contracts. I know what each of them says. One of them did not even bid to the requirements that were put out. They're also the higher bidder. I move that we go forward and make the purchase of Hart.
Okay, do I hear a second?
What about you?
Okay. I'll second the motion. So the motion has been made by Commissioner Wilson to select Hart to provide the voting equipment and to purchase it now with the same understanding that we have in the contract, seconded by Judge Massengill. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Do you abstain?
I said nay. I would rather wait till the end of the legislative session just to make sure.
Motion carries three to two. Okay, this brings up the last item. Discuss and take appropriate action to adopt a standing order as to who presides over Commissioners Court when the county judge is not present. Okay?
I'm going to make a motion to readdress the who presides over Commissioners Court when the county judge is not present, given the fact that Kevin Andrews, Commissioner Andrews and myself were at mandatory training when that vote was taken.
Okay. And who do you, you make a motion as to who?
I'll make a motion that the, you know, the selection of Commissioner Cotton, you know, stays.
Okay, I second that motion. Okay, the motion has been made that Commissioner Cotton, who was selected as county judge pro tem in my election, when Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Andrews was gone to remain as the county judge pro tem, seconded by Judge Massengill. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, do you abstain?
I'm abstaining.
Motion carries three to two abstains, two abstentions. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. That concludes this Commissioners Court at 20 to 1.